Good morning, everybody. I can see by the computer staring me in the face that it's 10 o'clock. So I will call this meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Today will be led by Vice Chairwoman Sharla Hales.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment. A public comment will be at three minutes and there will be a warning light letting you know that you have 30 seconds left. And please make your comments. If it's regarding to item number one, or should I say item number only, then we will do that after we do item number one. And then we will have a final public comment after that. So, public comment is now open.
Jason Gibson, I was ambushed again yesterday on the way to the meeting. Apparently Chairman Rice and Chairman Gardner don't want me here at this budget meeting knowing about these numbers. As we got into, and that was by Martin Hart, they used Martin Hart and Michael Johnson from the Tahoe Justice Court to ambush me on the way and claim that I had a mandatory appearance in court that I had no knowledge of, where they tried to use a maladministrative technicality to put me in jail for 10 days to keep me from these meetings. The reason why they don't want me at these meetings is because I'm awake, genuinely awake. And I can't be bought or sold and neither can the House of Gibson. We found out yesterday from the little research we did that our numbers are grossly underestimated when it comes to the maladministrative fraud being practiced by this county. Grossly underestimated. What we found out is that there's about a 30 to 40% extra increase in the incomes of these public servants who claim to be something that they're not. We found out that just with, in the hierarchy of Douglas County sheriffs, that Ron Elges, the undersheriff, and his wife make a half a million dollars a year. Two people make more than the average family in Douglas County. They make 10 times more than the average family in Douglas County. Two people. You look at their payroll, you look at these punks who are running this jail-like facility, they're punks. They had me arrested at the zombie Nerf war. I challenged Elges and his sidekick Coverley to a friendly game of zombie Nerf war. So they had me arrested on an assault and battery. So I went into that jail there and they put me right where I could see everything and everybody. They got nine to 13 guys running around there. Nothing better to do. They booked me twice. Same question, same paperwork. Walking around with their body armor, all important like, you know? The youngest punk makes $120,000 a year. Doesn't even know his constitution, how many articles are in it. Doesn't care, doesn't have to care. Most of them are hunchback going bald because they're eating junk food all day watching football on their phones or on the computer. Getting paid top dollar, chasing paperwork around like they're doing something important. Wait till you see the claims we bring against this institution in this county. We got at least two dozen claims to show how these, who these people really are.
You should be ashamed of yourselves.
Any further public comment? Saying none. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. Just to clarify, NRS 241.03532. A witness who is testifying before a public body may publish defamatory matters in a matter of a public meeting. It is unlawful to misrepresent any fact knowingly when testifying before a public body. Public comment is considered testimony before the board.
Thank you, sir. All right, seeing no more public comment, I will close public comment and I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is approved. We will now move to the administrative agenda. For possible action, item number one. Item number only. Discussion to provide staff direction to the preparation of the fiscal year 2024-25 budgets for all Douglas County and Douglas County Redevelopment Agency funds. Discussion may include a general overview of the Douglas County budget and presentations by staff, including but not limited to presentations on the following. General fund, all departments, including supplemental requests. Special revenue funds, including supplemental requests. Debt service funds, enterprise funds, including supplemental requests. Internal service funds, including supplemental requests. Capital project funds, including supplemental requests. Development agency funds. And Kathy Lewis, you're up.
Thank you very much. Kathy Lewis, CFO, for the record. Up for just a minute to say that we're going to start our presentations today with the Public Guardian, and I'm going to turn over to her.
Good morning.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Chairman, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. While Nicole gets situated, I just wanted to take a moment, excuse me, Ms. Thomas gets situated, I want to take a moment to introduce a member of the County Manager's Office team. This is Nicole Thomas. She has been before you recently with the renewal of the Public Guardian for another term. I cannot thank her enough for the wonderful work that she and her team do, and I see members of her team in the audience as well. I'm sure she'll introduce them. I don't want to steal her thunder, but we have such a wonderful group working to protect some of our most vulnerable population. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Nicole. Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you. Nicole Thomas, Douglas County Public Guardian. In the back here, we have Casey Myers, our Deputy Guardian, and Sally Gonzalez, our Case Manager. So our mission statement is the Douglas County Public Guardian is a county government agency focused on the practice and issues of substitute decision-making for vulnerable persons. The Public Guardian promotes best practices and ethical provisions of service in the least restrictive manner possible through education and advocacy for its clients in the community. Our department provides critical wraparound services to individuals who are unable to protect themselves from abuse and exploitation or provide for their own basic needs as a result of cognitive impairment often caused by dementia, traumatic brain injury, or other conditions. These services are provided through a legal process known as guardianship, and the Public Guardian must be court-appointed. The Public Guardian ensures access to comprehensive services that include appropriate medical care, social work services, and financial management. Typically, clients who are served by the Public Guardian do not have available family members or loved ones who can reliably provide these services. What's most important to us is our values. We believe in the services that are to be provided are in the least restrictive manner possible, respecting the rights and the dignity of vulnerable adults. We strive for the highest professional standards and ethics in providing services. We are committed to the education and training of our staff and our community members. And we believe in professional collaboration and legislative advocacy in the working towards the well-being of vulnerable persons. And how we indicate if we are doing our job is in our direct client service hours. So our direct service hours are the hours that we spend in the direct service of our clients, and this can include doctor appointments, cleaning out homes, chasing dogs, or filing, or filling out applications for assistance and paying bills. 81% of our time is spent in the direct assistance of our clients, and the remainder of our time is spent on administrative tasks, such as checking emails, organizing case files, education, and county administration. Since 2016, our average caseload has been about 28 clients per year served, and our longest open case predates my office and has been served since 2002. Our youngest client is 19 years old, and our oldest is 94. We have served two minor guardianships cases since my appointment as Public Guardian, and our oldest client served was 99 years old. As you can see, our service hours dipped during COVID, and that is because we couldn't physically see a lot of our clients in person due to the restraints of COVID-19 in facilities.
As long as you're there, though, were you participating with them via Zoom or other methods?
Yes.
So you don't include those as service hours?
I'm sorry, I could not hear you. I could not hear you.
So you did participate with the public in 2021 and 21, 22 via electronic means, I take it?
Yes.
But you didn't include those as your service hours? That surprises me.
It takes less time to do a video call than it does to drive to a facility because we include that time and then spend time with the client and come back. So your hour, an hour visitation, then turns into a three-hour visitation.
Got it. That's understandable. Thank you. I guess the point is that you didn't go substantially above what you had previously done, it's just that the method of delivering your services was different, so.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
The other indicator that we utilize is how many clients we serve who are indigent. Our average number of clients that we serve that are indigent since 2016 is about 17 per year, which is around an average of 61% of our caseload. Currently, we're serving an indigence rate of 80% as 20 of our clients are indigent. Our last indicator is the miles that we travel in the assistance of our clients. This last year, we traveled 5,280 miles. An average number of clients we serve in home is about 5.34 of our caseload. The highest number of clients we've served in home has been about nine, and we currently have five clients in home. To keep a client in home, they must not have a life-sustaining medication, be insulin-dependent diabetic, have a predisposition to wander, or have difficulties in remembering to eat. These are all safety concerns. Unless they have funds available to qualify for an in-home program, either private pay or through other assistance that may be able to assist them in home, then we must move them to a facility. Out of the clients that we maintain in home, three of our current clients have maintained in home for the duration of their guardianship and some of them for over 10 years.
Without getting into specifics, because I don't want to necessarily identify anybody, that's confidential, I'm sure, but demographics-wise or geographically, geographically, I guess, do you find, is there a particular area of our county that you find more in need of your services than others?
There are. We do not service as many state-line clients as we do within the valley, and typically that's due to funding. Usually, clients in state-line have more funds and they have estate plans, and so we have a smaller percentage in that area. Most of the clients that we serve tend to hub around Central, Gardenville, and Minden, and we've had a significant portion in both the TRE areas and Upper County.
I guess that's where I was going, so, yeah. Thank you.
I also have a question. Getting, honing in a little bit more on how your clients become your clients. So if a person or a family has the means to go through court themselves, set up a guardian on their own, with their own resources, then they tend to do that. But you do have a significant number who are not indigent that use your services, so do they, do they call you and say, can you help us with this? Or how does this work?
Nicole Thomas, Public Guardian, for the record. Typically, our clients who maybe have more finances, that 20% that we serve, are typically coming to our care due to exploitation and abuse. So they have been served by either a family member or somebody within the community who have not done them the due diligence of their fiduciary responsibility. And so Adult Protective Services, or DCSO, or the courts themselves in a temporary protection or a civil matter will appoint us in, or in the likelihood that that guardianship did rise to the level of already having a guardianship and the judges indicated exploitation or abuse, they will. Other than that, most of our cases still do come from Douglas County Sheriff's Office, Adult Protective Services, and the courts, and that's how our referral process comes in. We have to have that secondary identifier for reasons why that person needs a guardianship before we file a petition. We are still one of the only guardianship entities throughout the state of Nevada that does petition in. Most of the rural counties go back and forth on if it's appropriate to petition in. However, these families and these clients who have no families don't have a way to petition themselves in, and so to keep them in home and to intervene earlier instead of later where they're at a skilled nursing or a fallen victim or prey, we're capable of doing an investigation by filing with the courts, by using that Adult Protective Services or DCSO report, and then petitioning in as the guardian.
Thank you for that explanation. The takeaway for me is that your clients are truly people who need your help.
They are the most vulnerable in our county. The Public Guardian is the guardian of last resort, so somebody else who can serve shall serve, and part of our process is to identify if there's someone who can serve. So our accomplishments for this year, the Public Guardians Office has projected about 63,000 in guardianship fees. Additionally, our office has sought an ADSD grant in the amount of $190,000. The Public Guardians Office visits their clients for the care. We've completed 156 grocery deliveries, 192 doctor appointments, served 20 indigent clients, completed 4,129 direct client service hours, and traveled 5,283.8 miles in the service of our clients so far this year. The Public Guardians Office completed five financial exploitation investigations with investigations recommended to criminal investigation. And in conjunction with the DCSO and Attorney General's Office, our office supports the End Abuse and Later Life Project, which is a fantastic project, which supports the older persons to fight against physical, sexual, and financial abuse. The Public Guardians Office also created the Representative Payee Program, which we'll discuss later, and applied for subaward grant funding through ADSD to run that program. And I apologize, the goals for next year should say 24, 25. And our goals are to implement and meet the goals of the Representative Payee Program. And we'll do that by ensuring outreach to the senior citizen community, as well as community service partners, such as financial institutions, ensure outreach to Douglas County Sheriff's Organization and most, and offer this Representative Payee services to 40 clients of the age 60 and over, and offer Representative Payee Trust services to two, three qualified income Medicaid clients. We also strive to deliver successful advocacy that achieves positive human right outcomes for our clients, and we'll do that by streamlining our processes and consistency in our practice, improve information sharing and joint work across business units, and develop consistency in practice and focus on practice improvements, that is utilizing statewide techniques and national techniques. And we're going to increase partition, participation in community collaborations such as the multidisciplinary team meetings. Additionally, to work better as one community, better integrating our functions with one another and reducing siloed activity across the community and county. And we'll do that by developing strong relationships of accountability with those who we oversee and work with, developing stronger relationships with our clients, and embedding human rights in all that we do. It is sometimes very difficult to maintain relationships where you're having to keep people accountable to do their job. It sometimes breaks down those relationships. We have to work extra hard to ensure that it's for the need of the client versus people's personal feelings.
Ms. Thomas, before we go any further, how is your program, how are, I guess, how are our clients referred to you? I know we have also a Good Neighbor Program in our community, I believe that operates through Social Services now versus Douglas County Sheriff's Office. Is there a strong integration there? I would imagine it is, but.
Yes, sir. Nicole Thomas, Douglas County Public Guardian, for the record. We receive referrals from three entities: Adult Protective Services, Douglas County Sheriff's Office, and the courts. That's under NRS, that's how we can receive information, because we're dealing with personal private information such as social security numbers, medical information, and should only come from those entities. So what typically happens is there'll be a person, and family members, family members can call in about their family, and they're able to share that information with us. So what typically will happen is an officer is out in the field, he sees somebody who is in need, and he will make a referral, he or she will make a referral to our office by sending us their well-check referral. What we utilize with that is we will file an investigation with the courts to see if we can gain more information and work with those multidisciplinary team meetings to see if there is more information that we can utilize. And our Social Services and our Good Neighbor Programs are involved in those multidisciplinary. It allows us to share information in an environment that is appropriate. Once we receive that referral, then we petition the courts, and then we can receive those medical documents that are necessary for us to move forward through referrals. So we all work in conjunction together, but sadly, the Good Neighbors cannot make those referrals to us, it has to be a DCSO officer. So that's a heavy lift, and we do it with a very small office. So in our office is the guardian, who's myself, who manages the office, our deputy guardian, who takes care of most of the Medicaid applications, does a lot of the client visits, Casey Myers, and our accounting specialist or case manager, Sally, who manages all of the funds within our office, and then we are the secondary check on those funds. And that allows us to appropriately serve clients in the way that we need to, so we have a total of three FTEs. Guardianship is not a money-making situation. So our revenues can seem meager compared to other counties, or in compared to other county entities, and that's because guardianship revenues are based upon court orders. So we cannot receive funds back to the general fund unless a court order is issued, and that goes through the Brunzel effect for both our lawyers' fees and for guardianship fees. And they are up to court discretion. 80% of our clients are served are indigent, they're on state assistance, they receive very minimal funds, and they need all of those funds for their care. Every once in a while, they won't spend their extra funds and we're able to get a small amount paid back to the county, and when that's appropriate, the judges will order that, but they're still considered indigent. So our revenues projected for this year is 63,000. Our revenues when I first started were projected around 15,000, so we've been able to increase that significantly. And our revenues that are already received this year is 27,000, and revenues ordered but are not reflected, meaning we have the court order but they haven't gotten into New World Systems, is about 19,000, and probably a little bit higher because we've had a couple court cases in the last, or court in the last couple of weeks. So we have what I consider, versus the rest of the county, a very small services and supplies budget, and we maintain that quite efficiently. You will see over the years that these numbers will kind of drift up and down, and that is based upon our clients. So some of our clients will need us to travel further to see them. Some of our clients will need us to take special training because they have a specific diagnosis, and so, and some of our clients may need us to store their items for a longer period of time because those items are caught up in a court order. So what we do is we kind of look at the projections from the last couple of years, knowing our client basis and what we can see, and try to predict where we may utilize those funds every year. So in our travel, you can see that we're down 69%, and that's because, because prior to 2023, the National Guardianship Association was the only entity that created our CEUs. And this last year, the Center for Guardianship Excellence actually opened up a lot of virtual CEUs for us to be able to take. So usually throughout the year, we would travel to the National Guardianship Association, that's a very expensive trip. It's one trip per year, and it would require us to travel wherever it is over the country, so that would change that amount, and we would get all of our CEUs in three days. Now, being able to utilize those virtual CEUs, we're able to stay here, serve our clients more effectively, and take those trainings online. That's where you'll see an increase in our training and education, and that's because we're paying for those CEUs to be able to stay here, so we're just shifting those funds from travel into training. However, we do visit all of our clients, and that sometimes depends, our travel will go up and down depending on where they're at. And that has a lot to do with the fact that we have very limited Medicaid facilities in Douglas County. Most of our clients who are Medicaid-funded must move out of the county, and so we visit them just as if they were living here in town. An additional increase would be in our bonding, and that's because it's best practices to make sure that everybody in our office is bonded, and so we are working towards creating that. As I move more into administrative tasks and my staff is doing more of the day-to-day work, we want to ensure that they're covered with a bond so that the county and the client is covered. And then additionally, our professional services has increased, and that's because the cost of caregiving and case management services that support our office has increased, and we want to make sure that we're capable of covering that so our clients are still seen in the appropriate management. And we're hoping that with this grant, we're able to cover some office supplies and some of our software that we utilize to maintain our clients' finances, and that should help us reduce those costs. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So although you have served young clients, I'm sure the majority is in the later part of life. Given the demographic of our county and the numbers you already showed us, it looks like your caseload is going up. And do you expect that to continue?
So our population is about 30% over the age of 60 and higher, 55 and higher, depending on which number you move, and our disability population is about 8% because we also serve clients with disabilities. So 40% of our population are clients that may be served by our area. And so we do anticipate both our caseload increasing, but because resources are so limited, it's really the dynamics of how difficult those cases are that require more of us one-on-one in those cases because the resources aren't available. Whether a resource is available or not, we still have to meet our clients' needs. And so that means that sometimes my staff are chasing dogs and washing dishes, sometimes they are cleaning out vehicles. Just last week, they cleaned out a vehicle that was very hazardous. And so they suit up, we suit up, and we do that. So it's both the intensity of those caseloads are increasing and also our clients, we do expect them to continue to rise. I don't have a percentage for you, and that is just because the changing environment. Some cases get to us early in the stage of their guardianship, and some cases don't get to us until they're an end of life. So we may have a client for only three months, we may have a client for 30 years. It just depends on the situation. So next, I would like to talk to you about our Representative Payee Program. The Public Guardian has maintained a Representative Payee Program for the life of the Public Guardian, and that's because Public Guardian, under NRS and by the Social Security Administration, is the chosen Representative Payee. We have laws out there that allow us to be a Representative Payee because we manage funds for our clients. So that program already exists. What we're looking to do is expand that program to adults who don't need guardianship as a lower-level service, and this will also be supported by Social Services, providing wraparound case management, and we will be managing their funds. So the Office of Public Guardian, as a public Representative Payee, acts as a substitute Payee as designated by Social Security Administration for individuals who have difficulty managing money or their financial affairs. On behalf of the individual, the Office of Public Guardian receives their monthly income, makes payments to cover their monthly expenses, and manages their financial resources. This program is limited to individuals who receive a steady income through public entitlements, public benefit programs, or other stable ongoing benefit programs. All applicants must have a case manager, licensed social worker affiliated with Social Services, and the case manager must be willing and able to prepare a monthly budget and monitor the activities of the applicant. For this purpose of the program is to provide financial management to individuals who needs cannot be met, or who needs can be met without the formality of a guardianship. So this is a lower-level financial program that will allow us to keep clients in home for longer periods of time, because if you stabilize the client's finances and you stabilize them through Social Services and wraparound case management, we're reducing the need for them to go to skilled nursing and that Medicaid long-term cost at the end of their life. So we're spending a little bit of money here to gain a lot of savings in the future. As you can see from our flow chart, there'll be a lot of collaborative effort between the Social Services and the Public Guardian, working together in checks and balances to serve these types of clients. The coordination between the Social Services Department and the Public Guardian Representative Payee Program will provide wraparound services combined with financial management in order to stabilize a client with early intervention. And this can save 1.4 to 2.4 million dollars in long-term care costs over the lifetime of a client. The earlier we get into protect these clients, and these are clients who've been determined by outside sources to need this type of care. Um, the earlier we get in to protect these clients, and these are clients who've been determined by outside sources to need this type of assistance. So we aren't making those determinations. Um, but getting them earlier will allow us to keep them in their homes for significantly longer periods of time. And the longer we serve them in their home, the lower costs they are to the county. Case in point. Um, these wraparound services are also associated with a five percent reduction in the number of emergency department visits each year. The healthier a client is, the longer they can stay in their home, the better that we can service them. So how are we going to do that? We need another deputy. A deputy public guardian. I'm sorry, I went too far in my notes. A deputy public guardian, um, will direct the operations of the financial management portion of the representative payee program fifty percent of the time. So fifty percent of their time is going to be dedicated to the representative payee program. The other fifty percent of the time is going to be dedicated to promoting the, the public guardian's office and we'll talk about that. Additionally, this will allow for best practices to met for caseload and on-call rotation within the public guardian's office. So currently, the public guardian, myself, I'm required to have an emergency line access twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year for emergencies for our clients. Currently, we have it scheduled that other than vacations, I take one weekend off per month. What that means is that over the last eight years of service, I have been on-call and responsive to our emergency line sixty-four of ninety-six paid holidays. I have had worked two hundred and eighty-eight weekends approximately and a cumulative of forty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-two hours after my regular shift. Give or take vacations and maternity leave. Um, that this, uh, this deputy guardian will allow for a one week on, one week off rotation for on-call and standby. Meaning that I will serve on-call for seven days, the deputy will serve on-call for seven days, I will serve on-call for seven days, my other deputy will serve on-call for seven days. Which is best practices to prevent burnout. So how are we going to fund this position? So we applied for the ADSD subaward grant for in-home services for representative payee. And we're hoping to receive about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That's going to support four positions, two FTEs that we already have in the public guardian's office, which is our case manager position. And my, my position is the public guardian, a portion of that to maintain and run the program. And two FT positions to support the grant project and the deputy public guardian, as the deputy public guardian and the case manager. Um, so that means that if we receive this grant, which we'll know, uh, relatively soon, uh, that grant should apply about forty-seven thousand dollars for this deputy guardian position, which leaves us a deficit of about fifty thousand dollars. Um, in conversations with the county manager and assistant county manager and community services, there's an alternate funding source that we could utilize to cover the, the balance of that position. Um, additionally, this ADSD grant will hopefully also give us about fifty-two thousand dollars that will support FT salaries that already exist. Reducing our, uh, costs on the public guardian side. Uh, and this will help cover the work that our office already does. We're already maintaining those amounts. We serve about twenty clients under our representative payee program already. And it will also help support our qualified income trusts. If we also receive this grant, it'll help us with support for software, education, insurance, bonding, travel and mileage. And with that, if you have any questions.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Gardner. I don't like, uh, well, anyways, the services you provide to the county are absolutely essential. And, uh, and I salute you for that. Um, uh, and it takes a special person to do this. Uh, I recognize that. My daughter is a special education teacher in the Lodi Unified School District. And it's quite frankly, it's a job I, I just don't have the makeup to do. So I appreciate what you bring. Um, grant timing. Uh, you, you talked about, you know, the need for this person, uh, and, and I, I'm hesitant to, you know, uh, allocate, uh, uh, FTEs, uh, based on the possibility of getting a grant. So, um, what is, what is the, you've applied for the grant, what is the timing on that? And, uh, you know, cause there's no assurances that you're actually going to be able to get the grant, right? So that's, that's always the crap shoot, so what, what's the timing on that?
Nicole Thomas, public guardian, for the record. Um, ADSD doesn't release those timing indicators for us. However, it should be before, um, it should be relatively around the time of June, based on other grants that have been received, um, in those fundings. Additionally, there are no other representative payee programs that are funded by, by, um, nonprofits or others within the county. So there are funds that are supposed to be set aside in each county for a representative payee program. And those are not being utilized right now. Um, there was really good indicators that we would receive this funding. Um, and additionally, outside of the representative payee program, the deputy guarding position is needed.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? Thank you so much for your presentation. It was very educational. And you talk fast.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate your listening. Sometimes these, um, these clients don't have a voice and I'm happy to bring those clients forward too with a voice. Thank you.
Thank you so much for what you do. All right, next up is finance. Seems like everything we do today is finance.
Kathy Lewis, CFO for the record.
You navigate through that so quickly. It's incre, you know, I've, I've watched some people fumble around, but you, you've done this before.
For practicing. Yeah, Kathy Lewis, um, for the record, um, um, I appreciate you, um, talking about Nicole talks fast because I also talk very fast. So, um, fellow fast talker I like. Um, this, uh, my presentation today are, is of departments that, um, have chosen not to do a full, full presentation. Um, and so as we go through this, I have the assessor, public administrator. I do have the sheriff's budget to show, um, because, and if you, when he did his, um, presentation, he didn't have his budget detail. So I have that there, the details in the book. And then, um, I have juvenile probation and detention center. And I do have, um, the chief, um, Tammy Morris here that she can talk about juvenile probation and Jape, and the detention center when we get to that point. So those are the four that I'm doing. In the presentation, it also listed the law library, but I did talk about the law library yesterday. So a little timing on that one. Um, for the assessor's budget, they, um, they are in the, our county assessor is in the general fund, um, in department one sixty-two. Um, this, his department is, is a, for the services and supplies is a pretty steady department, pretty steady revenues. You can see from FY twenty-five to twenty-four is actually a, a small decrease in his overall budget. The, um, one thing I would like to say is, um, we did talk to the county assessor, um, this morning and invited him to come tomorrow afternoon at the end of the presentations to talk more in detail about property taxes and what properties get three percent. What properties get the commercial cap versus the residential cap and, and answer those questions that, there's some of the questions that the commissioner has brought up yesterday morning. He is willing to come back tomorrow afternoon to talk about that. So, so I have for the assessors. The public guard, public administrator, not guardian, sorry, public administrator is an elected position. As you guys are aware, um, we do pay for the benefits of the public administrator, um, not a salary, just the benefits. And then he has a very small service and supplies budget. We, um, there's a little bit allocated for legal services. And then this past year, we put in just a thousand dollars for, um, some office, um, supplies. If he needs that to help him organize his files and stuff like that. So we kept that in for next year's budget.
Uh, Ms. Lewis, before we move on, Jennifer Davidson, county manager for the record. Um, as a reminder to the board, there was an operational review of the public administrators', um, uh, responsibilities. Um, that resulted in some findings and recommendations from Moss Adams. Um, specifically in that review, there was a suggestion, uh, that the public administrator may need some additional resources moving forward. And we heard from the county commission, um, that the appropriate time for us to discuss this with the public administrator would be during the budget. Um, I did direct Ms. Lewis and I thank you for that. I feel weird saying I directed you. I asked you, uh, to reach out to our public administrator in the preparation of this budget to ask if he had any resource needs. Um, and I believe he indicated to you, he did not have any specific budget requests. I subsequently followed up with him in a conversation about a month later, later to confirm he is in fact not asking for any additional resources as part of this budget cycle. Just wanted to give the board a heads up because we did have that conversation, um, towards the end of last year, I think, uh, you looked at that report from Moss Adams. So thank you for that.
So, uh, along those lines, Ms. Davidson, uh, I know that, I believe, uh, part of our conversation a few months ago, in this regard, uh, the public administrator is the ability to have files, uh, electronically. And, and a program that would assist that him in the, in the performance of his duties, uh, through electronic means versus necessarily paper files. Uh, so did we go down that road of, of, of trying to determine if that was, uh, a, a product, I, I suppose, uh, that would assist him in the performance of his duties?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Jennifer Davidson, for the record. Uh, in my conversation with our public administrator, Mr. Walsh, um, I did review the recommendations of the Moss Adams report with him. I specifically discussed staffing and software. And he said neither were needed at this time.
Kathy Lewis, for the record, I will add on to that, that, that I also offered, um, to help, um, create some Excel spreadsheets if he, if that would help him too. So some simple non-cost, um, Excel spreadsheets to help him. Okay, and then, um, the next, um, couple of slides, um, are with juvenile probation. So I'd like to invite our, um, chief probation officer up. So, um, I know, um, she, as, as we found in these past couple of days, um, department heads and elected officials, um, know their budgets and know their programs much more than, than we do. So thank you for joining me. Um, I'll go through your budget and then you can talk about your department. Um, so in juvenile probation, there are two general fund departments. One is juvenile probation and one's detention. This first one is juvenile probation. Um, overall, there was a twenty-seven thousand dollar increase. And when you look at that, um, we, um, added uniforms to, um, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So we carried that forward, um, as a new budget line item for, um, the staff. Um, also in small equipment, um, the court IT has indicated that they need, um, the fifteen thousand dollars to be able to replace, um, the computers. And so juvenile probation falls under the court IT system. And then the software, um, looking at actual softwares, um, I believe, um, Ms. Morris has done a very good job of trying to clean up her budget and know where her expenditures are. So part of that is in software. Um, there are software needs for Adobe, um, Acrobat, the, the Pro and then annual licensing for the database. So that was the increase in that budget. Um, I'll quickly go through the, um, detention center, um, overall increase of twelve thousand dollars. And, and when you look at that, um, as I, as we're seeing in, in many, um, many services like, um, juvenile probation is professional services, the increase in budget to cover the mental health crisis and, and of the youth there at the detention center. And then the same as the juvenile probation, um, you increase in the uniforms. And from there, um, my next slide is, is talking about, um, the supplemental request, but then I'll turn it over to Ms. Morris.
Good morning, Tammy Morris, for the record. Uh, thank you Kathy and thank you to finance for helping me with that. As she mentioned, I am trying to, um, clean up the budget, so to speak, and make sure that our expenditures are accurately reflected and that the light items are correct. So I appreciate the help on that. Um, real quickly, I just wanted to, before I go into the supplemental, I wanted to discuss the, the mental health crisis that she mentioned for detention. In our detention center per NRS, we have to provide for mental health treatment for juveniles in our custody. As soon as, as soon as the need arises and as quickly as possible. We previously had a, an entity that was local. They had a grant that they were able to provide those resources to us on their grant and there was no cost to us. They lost their grant this past year and we have had to absorb those costs. So that's where that comes from and based on actual use now and what we're projected, um, by the end of the year. It doesn't happen very frequently, thankfully, but at times we do have juveniles that express suicidal ideation. Or they, they begin to have some type of a mental health concern that's happening while they are in our custody. And we do have to address that. That's where that came from. I just wanted to clarify that. Um, additionally, I wanted to talk about a couple of accomplishments or achievements that we've had this year. Uh, one of the big ones was that our detention center passed the Prison Rape Elimination Act audit. Every three years, there is a PRIA audit and that, we had never have, had one before. And that entails mountains of paperwork for Chris Zarin, our detention manager. But the auditor came in and they take a look at our facility to see if we're in compliance. And there were a lot of areas that we were doing things correctly, even before the PRIA came into existence, which I'm happy to report. But there were other areas that we did need to clean up. Some were signage, some were, um, creating a coordinator and a detention, um, compliance manager, which we've done. And getting a direct line for youth to be able to report sexual abuse anonymously, those types of things. Um, but I'm very happy to report that we did pass that audit and we are subject to the audit every three years. Another thing I am grateful for, uh, that we received a grant through the partnership Douglas County this year um, to help replace our outdoor behavioral health program equipment. If, if you're not aware, we, as part of probation, we have an officer who is an outdoor behavioral health specialist. And he takes juveniles out on trips and they learn team building. They learn how to be, um, responsible for one another out in the, out in the wild. Essentially, we've got this in our backyard. Um, but also he runs programs such as, um, Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens. And that, that program has a series of classroom-type activities that they will hold out, you know, on the trail and that type of thing. And it, it has books along with it and he presents a whole curriculum. And part of that funding that we got and that grant was for prevention for opioid addiction and, and those types of things. So that's what we were able to use it for, which was great because the equipment was very old. We've been running this program the whole time I've been here and that's been twenty-three years. So, um, it needed to be replaced to make sure that our kids are safe out there. So now I wanted to, unless you have questions, does anybody have questions before I move on to the supplemental?
Apparently not.
Okay, uh, Tammy Morris, for the record. So with my supplemental request, um, you've, you've got the long version up there and I think it's probably a couple of pages. So, um, I'm just going to give you an overview of what that is and I'm certainly available for questions. As I mentioned, we had our PRIA audit. And the auditor noted one area that is going to require a practice change for us. And that is with regard to unannounced rounds. Unannounced rounds are designed to deter staff sexual abuse and harassment. They occur three times a week at varying shifts, including graveyard shift in our detention center. They are to be done by intermediate level or higher level staff to conduct these rounds and, and check the areas without the other staff knowing. And then they have to document that. We currently don't have any intermediate staff. We have the detention manager and we have ten youth counselors. And then myself. These rounds are to be done in person. Previously, we were doing them via video, um, which is always helpful. But it was because we don't have any intermediate level staff. And the auditor noted they must be done in person. So, right now, like I mentioned, we just have Chris, who is our detention manager. And she is also our PRIA coordinator and available twenty-four seven for any type of PRIA allegations or any concerns. She has to manage that as well as her administrative duties to run the facility. We have the ten youth counselors. What we need are four youth counselor senior positions. What I'd like to do is take four of our current employees and make them the senior to fill that. I'm not looking for new FTE just to be able to move four of them into a senior position. What that would do is help them, or actually help Chris, because they would be able to then perform the unannounced rounds because they'd be on the shift. That would give us coverage, um, on both halves of the week. The staff there work twelve-hour shifts. So you've essentially got four days on, four days off with a little overlap in between, which is why four are needed. Because there's two, it's kind of hard to explain. There's a day shift and a graveyard shift each at twelve hours. There's a day shift and a graveyard shift each at 12 hours. So at each half of the week, you would need two senior positions, if that makes sense. So they would be able to be the intermediate-level staff to ensure that the unannounced rounds are taking place, as well as they would be on shift to accurately report and document the PRIA variances that may occur on the shift. When there's a staff on shift, they have to document where staff are at each time, where the kids are, and all of that has to be turned in to Chris, and ultimately, that's part of the annual PRIA reporting that she must do. Right now, that's being done, but Chris is the only manager available to, to state whether that's accurate or not, and she's not present on every shift. So the senior position would also provide oversight for the staff. They would be able to take the lead in an emergency or medical situation, they would be responsible for medication administration, they would be able to assist the detention manager with accurate shift documentation, as I mentioned. They'd also be able to help train new staff and ensure policies are adhered to. Additionally, they'd be able to handle grievances more promptly. There's a grievance box that only a manager or intermediate-level staff could manage, and if Chris is not on shift, that's not going to happen until possibly after her days off. So that would allow for that to happen in a more timely manner as well. So I'll entertain any questions. I apologize for trying to get that out. I'm a little bit nervous.
Mr. Chair, I just had a que, I didn't see the amount of increase on the supplemental. Am I missing it?
Yes, Tammy Morris for the record. I believe it's $35,000 is what the, the ongoing cost would be to make, as I mentioned, I'm not asking for FTE, but in order to have the senior positions.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions. So I'm going to make an observation, and this is not geared towards your program, okay? It's overall broad-based an observation in regards to the entire county. It did not really involve too much yesterday's discussions, but as we get into these discussions today and probably over the next couple of days, and I, I know I'm going to appear an ogre, or perhaps even a scrooge, but my observations are that we just approved a compensation and classification study a few months ago that increased our salaries and wages substantially within the county, recognizing that we're way behind the, the ball in that regard. However, that appears to me to be putting a tremendous strain on our ability going forward with, with these positions. It's really putting a strain, as I see it, on our budget, and, and that's concerning to me. And I, you know, we had an opportunity a few months ago when we discussed the reorganization of the library, where we approved a, a change in a position from, to a library supervisor, and I think we were told that that would not incur any additional costs. But any, well, I, okay, I might be, okay, but you know where I'm going here, okay? Every time, we just, we just approved the compensation and classification study, which moved everybody's salaries pretty much across the board, and it's having some impact on this budget, is it not? Because as I look at these budgets and look at the salaries and wages of these areas, every one of them has gone up and going up substantially, and so that concerns me, the strain that it's putting on our budget. And, and so I, I, we, I think we need to be very, very careful in reclass, you know, we just did a reclassification, and now we're looking at, you're suggesting a reclassification here for individuals. So that's where I, I struggle. Just looking at a broad picture, an umbrella picture over our entire community, I don't know that we, I, I think we need to be very careful about that, as we, as we just approved raises, and now we're looking at, at perhaps even trying to approve raises, more raises here by, by just taking positions we have now and just reclassifying them to another, an upper level. So, so I appreciate what you're asking here, and I appreciate the, the, the scope of what you're talking about. I'm, I'm just trying to be circumspect, circumspect over the whole, the whole picture here, so thank you.
That was a long one.
I know.
Go ahead.
I don't have anything.
Oh, your lights are.
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry.
I'll ask, what are the risks or consequences if we don't?
Thank you, Tammy Morris for the record. Before I answer that real quickly, I wanted to just discuss that, the recent comp study that we had, and there were some reorganization, as you mentioned. At that time, we had a trainee position, and then we also had a youth counselor position, and then the detention manager. That created a somewhat intermediate-level position, but at the end of the comp study, the trainee position went away, so that put us back into this spot again. So that's sort of where that came from. And then to answer your question, Commissioner Hales, the consequence is that there's not consistency on shifts. If you don't have somebody who is overseeing the shift and ensuring that policies are being followed as they should be, and procedures being followed as they should be, you run into a concern about consistency, and we do see that in our detention center. When it comes to PRIA, if we don't have somebody present in the facility doing these rounds, they're going to be done by video, or I will drive up to the lake in the, in the middle of the night to do the check, to walk through the building, but it's supposed to be unannounced. They're going to know I'm coming in because I have to get in the door. Same thing with the detention manager, Ms. Zarin. If you have the position and a senior person present, they will be able to do them and not say, hey, I'm doing the unannounced round, I'll be able to document that. So really, it's, it's to protect the staff and the youth. The whole purpose of the unannounced round is to deter sexual abuse from staff in a detention facility. And in addition to that, having that senior position, it will provide consistency, the searches will be done appropriately, we won't be missing things when they come in, the documentation is going to be accurate because it's going to be done by somebody that's on the shift who is responsible to do so.
So I guess, I appreciate that, but I was actually seeking something more concrete. Could we lose certification? Could we, I mean, what are the, not, not the risks, but what will be the consequences if we ignore this?
Well, we are going to have that audit again coming up, and we won't be in compliance with what they have found to be a deficit for us. And ultimately, I, I can't answer exactly what would happen. I know that we receive a grant funding from the state as an ongoing income source for our department. I don't know if it would affect that if we were found to continuously be noncompliant. I can check with my detention manager, she knows all three things, PRIA, if you'd like more of an answer.
I guess my next question is, can you give up half an FTE to offset this amount?
I actually discussed that with Chris Zarin, our detention manager, this morning. We were discussing that. If we give up half an FTE, what it, it, we don't have part-time positions, and what it would do is it would probably leave a gap in having an intermediate person on a shift, because they're 12-hour shifts. So say, for instance, we had it on three of those shifts, that's fine, but then they also rotate, so there's always going to be a 12-hour gap then with one person not being in a senior role.
I mean, from a different category of employee, right? Like from a counselor, or, I don't know. I thought you said you have 10?
Oh, I'm sorry, we have 10 youth counselors, and they staff our facility. There's at least two on shift, we need to have two people on shift at all times. Occasionally, there's a third person, depending on scheduling. So we wouldn't be able to give up one of them. One of them would essentially become the senior, so we wouldn't lose the coverage on the shift. Is that what you're asking?
I'm just trying to get, is there some way to get what you want without increasing?
Tammy Morris for the record. I don't see that because the youth counselor position, the job description, does not include them overseeing any other staff. So I don't have the oversight if, if they're all equal, if that makes sense.
But if you took a youth counselor and made them halftime, part-time, wouldn't you offset this $35,000 that you want? That you would, that, that would enable you to have four intermediate positions?
If I'm understanding correctly, and forgive me if I'm not, what I'm understanding, what you're saying is to take one of our full-time youth counselor positions and make them part-time. I wouldn't have cover, double coverage on that 12-hour shift if we would have single coverage for a period of time on the shift.
Thank you for sticking with us.
Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager for the record. We have a similar situation out at China Spring Youth Camp with PRIA, and there, I think the challenges that Ms. Morris and her team are facing is they have less staff in, in detention, which makes it difficult from a flexibility standpoint, it, it minimizes their options. But I do think there are additional tools that can be explored here, and we have not had the benefit, Ms. Morris, of having this conversation, so I apologize that this is happening on the record. It would have been my preference to talk to you about this before. Sorry about that. But acting pay is one such example, and there's others. I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to sit down as a, a team with Human Resources to discuss options and see if, what we can come up with for potential solutions, and if in fact, we don't come up with a solution that is workable, that we bring this back for an additional conversation with the board as part of the, one of the evolving pieces of the budget right now, and I, I see Ms. Laying and Ms. Vito are in the audience, and I, I see them nodding, so I just always really respect our ability to get together and brainstorm. And if in fact, this is something that we can't find a workaround, then I would be comfortable bringing it forward as one of those adjustments that the county manager needs to potentially build in to the budget with the board's approval, obviously, so just throwing that out there.
Thank you. If I may, I know this is important. I know the double coverage is important, I know best practices to protect youth are important, and everyone on this board should know that that's important, because we have lived through something no board ever wants to live through. And so for me, I want to find a solution for this, and, and so, thank you.
Any further comments from the board? Thank you for that input. I believe that any of us that have been involved in custody, or law enforcement, or working with youth are aware of the dangers and the possible liabilities, and I don't want to see us having to go through what we just went through with another organization within this county. So thank you for trying to resolve it, and assure me the board is going, is willing to work with you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. I also want to, and thank the board and County Manager Jennifer Davidson. I think these, as these supplementals come forward, this type of discussion, exactly what needs to happen is, is how do we fund these important requests with the budget that we're in now? So I think, I appreciate it, all those discussions, that will continue to work. Thank you.
If we're between, this isn't for juvenile, but if we're between topics, but it's along the lines of what we're talking about is, I just wanted to provide information about a conversation I had with Sheriff Coverly last night, because I, I think all of us could see how beneficial the medical request was that he was making, and yet it is such a large amount of money. So I called him last night, and we talked about, he has a number, I think eight vacant positions that have been vacant for a long time, in the range of eight, somewhere along there. And so he and I talked about the sheriff's office just eliminating some of those vacant positions, and that would offset the cost of that medical program, and, and he agreed that that was a good idea, and he suggested he could eliminate three of those vacant positions, and that would free up the, the money, and I really appreciated that. And we also spoke about, he's had trouble filling all of those and keeping them filled anyway, and we also spoke about if the time comes when he needs those extra positions and thinks he can fill them, I'm sure that we would find a way to make that happen. So just an update on that.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a quick question before we get into the next thing?
Before we get into the next one, we're going to take a break, but go ahead and ask your question.
I'm just piggyback, piggybacking on what Commissioner Gardner said about the increase in the salaries and the reclassification, because all these are high 17% to 18% increases. Are these all caused by the reclassification, or is there something else that's causing these salary increases to be close to 20% across the board?
There are certain departments, of course, that have, that have those increases, and certain departments that, that do not. The, the budget for 24-25 was built on the existing positions, so there are no new positions in the budget. It is based on the comp and class study, the results of the employee contracts that were negotiated, and then what we, per those contracts and policy, what we expect for cost of living and the col, and the, and the merit increases for employees. And I do have, real quick before we take a break, just one, a couple more slides, and I think it, it's great segue into Commissioner, Commissioner Hales' discussion with the sheriff, is that the sheriff did a great presentation but did not include the budget slides, and so to be complete, even though the bud, all his, all his budgets are outlined in detail in our binders and in the supplemental, I did want to share his budget. I did combine, he has, I didn't count the number of departments, but there are departments 211 through 246 and Department 331, so we have several departments in the general fund. I combined them all into one, looking at his services and supplies overall, and I just want to go through the bottom line. The FY 25 to 24 budget, FY is, is about $16,000 increase. And so he, he did a great job talking about his services and stuff like that, but I wanted to show the budget, and it was a great segue into your discussion with the sheriff too, so. And that is probably my last presentation for a while, and the rest of the ones are for departments. Maybe you have any other questions for me?
Saying none, thank you, and we will take a 10-minute break. And we will take a 10-minute break.
Chairman, members of the commission, Christine Vito, Acting Human Resources Director, and sitting next to me, I have Wendy Lang, Human Resources Director and Acting Assistant County Manager. And we're here today to present the Human Resources Budget Presentation. In all honesty, I'm really nervous, and I asked Wendy to sit next to me for support.
Wendy Lang, for the record, Ms. Vito prepared this presentation, and it is top notch. I have every confidence in her.
So to start about our department, Human Resources is responsible for the county's Personnel Management and Risk Management Safety Services, which include job recruitment and employment, employee and labor relations, job classification, policy and procedure, development and administration, classification and compensation, risk management, employee safety programs, benefits administration, staff training, and organizational development. And under Human Resources, there are three funds. The Human Resources Budget is part of the general fund. And then we also have two internal service funds. 817 is Risk Management, and 818 is our self-insured dental. Human Resources supports county manager, direct report departments, elected departments, the towns, and the library. We assist 756 employees, 555 full-time, 97 part-time, which equals 55.29 FTEs, 13 elected officials, and 91 temporary positions. Currently, 57 of those 91 positions are our election workers. These numbers do include the vacancies that we have within the county as well. And the services we provide, I already covered, but we do recruitment, onboarding, offboarding, benefits, labor negotiations, policies, compensation, classification, employee relations, and risk management. Our department has seven full-time employees. The director reports to the county manager. We have one senior analyst, two HR analysts, and three human resource coordinators. Accomplishments for Human Resources this year. The first is we successfully implemented the Baker-Tilly Compensation and Classification Study. We first implemented it with non-represented employees in October 2023. And then after successful labor negotiations with DCA, we were able to implement the Baker-Tilly Class Comp Study with the DCA employees in January of 2024. The labor negotiations with DCA resulted in a four-and-a-half-year contract, placement in the new pay plan, and on a 4% salary adjustment for those employees after the placement. We also conducted countywide in-person training for employees. We did three different versions of ethics for employees, supervisors, and for law enforcement. And we also had our annual supervisory management program. Under recruitment, attrition is down from 25% in 2022 to 20% in 2023. To date, we have conducted 116 recruitments. And this year, we had significant, high-level recruitments, including Assistant County Manager, Airport Business Manager, Chief Financial Officer, Chief Technology Officer, Director of Community Services. Currently, we are still in the process of the recruitment for Director of Juvenile Camp Services, and we also did have the open application period for Justice of the Peace. We successfully implemented a new module in our NeoGov platform, e-forms, which allows Human Resources to send and receive forms electronically with employees. We also provided learning opportunities for employees this year, and we had representatives from Anthem, our insurance, our medical insurance and dental insurance provider, as well as Nevada Deferred Compensation Down, to meet with employees and answer their questions.
Ms. Vito, before you go beyond that slide, I just want to call the attention to, and that number is significant to me in recruitment area attrition, down from 25% in 2022 to 20%. That's a significant number. I think we can't call that out enough. And to me, that means that we have more skilled employees that are delivering the services to the county, which is important, not having that constant turnover there. So, and that cuts down on also our costs of training also. So, you know, that speaks to the fact that we put that Compensation and Classification Study into practice, and so, but I think it pays dividends in the long run for us. So, I just wanted to make sure we didn't go by that without recognizing that. So, thank you. Now, I know that we're also, on any given day, we're short employees. Is that number gone down as well? How is our recruitment coming? Or maybe you're getting into that slide now.
Thank you for the question. I do have a slide regarding recruitment. And I can answer your question, and I think if you just give me a minute and get to a couple of slides, I will get there for you. So, some of our performance measures. Here we are in recruitments conducted. As I already mentioned on the previous slide, we have conducted 116 recruitments thus far. And as you can see, over the past few years, our number of recruitments is coming down, and to the point that you made, Commissioner Gardner, we are seeing turnover slow down. The number of employees who are staying in their positions is increasing. We do believe that this board's approval of salary adjustments over the past two years have improved wages for existing staff and the starting wages for new hires. We have, in HR, increased our efforts in communicating the county's compensation and benefits offerings as a method to encourage employees to come over to Douglas County and work with us. We continue to research ways to collect information from employees to determine if there's other areas that can be addressed, and we're doing that through our exit interviews. And we are noticing applicant pools are getting bigger. The number of applicants who meet the minimum qualifications is increasing. And to that point, a recent recruitment had over 80 applications, and we haven't seen numbers like that in several years. So, it's all good signs pointing to, you know, good retention for Douglas County. Our next performance measure is our average performance evaluation ratings. They are remaining at the same level as last fiscal year with an average evaluation score of 2.78. As you may be aware, every full-time and part-time employee of the county is evaluated once during their probationary period within the, within six months of hire, and then annually thereafter. Performance evaluations tie directly to the county's strategic plan by tying the county values to employee performance. The current competencies on the employee evaluation are integrity, leadership, communication, teamwork, accountability, and customer service. And with this board's approval of the new strategic plan, we will be adding an additional competency of respect to the employee evaluation. It's important that employees are provided with feedback about the work they perform over the course of their evaluating period. Our last performance measure for Human Resources are the number of training opportunities offered. In fiscal year 2324, so far, we have offered 11 trainings, comprising of the various ethics in the workplace, trainings and sessions of the supervisory management program. There is an appetite for employees to have opportunities for more in-person trainings, and they do appreciate the in-person interaction and collaboration with partnerships across the departments. And they get to meet staff in similar capacities across the organization. Also, with training, these efforts tie into the strategic objective of retaining talent through focus on mentoring, professional development, and continuity of operations planning. Next, I'm going to highlight accomplishments of the risk management side of Human Resources. Risk management facilitates quarterly safety committee meetings. The safety committee is comprised of employees who voluntarily want to participate in this group, and they contain members of the Douglas County Employees Association, the Douglas County Sheriff's Protective Association, other non-represented employees, including employees of the courts, libraries, towns, and management. Regular meeting topics cover training needs and opportunities, safety concerns and discussions, safety improvements and suggestions, and current industry trends. In addition, Risk Management has provided in-person employee training as well. And in this fiscal year, we have offered OSHA 10 training, active shooter training, and Stop the Bleed training. Risk Management this year achieved mandatory DOT Clearinghouse compliance. This was a process where employees with CDLs had to be entered into a federal database regarding drug testing information. And staff were able to successfully implement this program, get the appropriate signed waivers from the employees, notifying them of this clearinghouse requirement.
Ms. Vito.
Yes.
DOT stands for Department of Transportation?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay. NDOT?
No, it's federal.
It's federal?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion. Staff in Risk Management have increased in-house subrogation towards third-party losses. That means that when there is a loss involving Douglas County and the other party is at fault, we've been successful in recovering monies from insurance carriers for those losses. They have also completed onsite safety inspections for OSHA compliance at various locations around the county. And we have sent staff on the Risk Management side to continuing education. And this year, they went to DOT, Department of Transportation 101, outlining the federal requirements specific to the clearinghouse. Performance measures for Risk Management. A large part of what Risk Management does is oversee our self-funded workers' compensation program. So, as you can see on the slide, our two performance measures are the number of workers' compensation claims and then the average incurred per claim by fiscal year. As you can see, on the first slide, it's hard to project the number of workers' compensation claims in any given year. Obviously, that's because we can't anticipate employees getting injured on the job. But what we have been very successful in, on the second slide, is even if an employee gets injured, we're working very hard to mitigate the amount of money that's expended on claims. And we're doing that-
Does that mean, I'm sorry?
Okay, yeah. I think you're probably going to ask the same question I'm going to, but go ahead.
Does that mean that because of safety measures implemented, each instance is a minor, a less major injury?
I don't think it's fair to say that, because each injury is unique in its own right. But what it does mean is we take great efforts to remain in communication with the employee, the treating providers, and the claims administrator. We have a third-party administrator. And we work to ensure employees are seen early, they're seen regularly, they're treated quickly, and we're able to return them to work. And in most cases, without going on leave completely, we are able to bring them back and do light-duty work.
I had a different question. Okay. Self-insured county?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a significant number then, right? Because that's dollars directly out of our bottom line, okay? So, the lesser amount of claims, and of course, the dollar outlay in regards to that is significant. So, great job, you know, right? So, we want our employees to be safe, because they stay on the job longer, of course. And so, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last fund that HR oversees, we also are self-insured for dental. All benefits eligible employees are required to enroll in the dental program. We have not increased county, I'm sorry, county or employee contributions in a number of years. And this has been due to, we've had a relatively healthy reserve in this account, and it's been the desire of previous boards not to increase rates while we still had a healthy fund balance. And the current network for dental is Anthem, similar to our medical. So, I'm going to talk about goals. For Human Resources, we have several mandatory trainings in our NeoGov platform that we are looking to update this year. We want to engage with new hires through an interactive onboarding process. We are describing this as different than new hire paperwork. We have an electronic platform to handle the new hire paperwork. I don't have a good title, but my working concept is we have a new supervisor training. And it's pretty much along the theme of, I'm a new supervisor, now what? And now I want to do something for new employees that's pretty much along the same line. I'm a new employee, now what? What are my resources? Who can I reach out to? Who are my internal service providers? What's our strategic plan? How does that tie into the work that I do as an employee of Douglas County? So, I want it to be very, you know, casual, allow for lots of questions, lots of good discussion. So, I'm hoping to work with Finance and other internal service departments so we can have, so we can have a resource for employees. So, we're not just a department, we're actually faces that they can come and speak to. I would like to continue providing in-person training opportunities. I think it's a really good opportunity for employees to get together with different groups of employees from other departments. Within the strategic plan that was, the draft that was approved, we do talk about removing the silos of the individual departments, and I think those in-person trainings help towards that goal. And we believe, or I'm sorry, we're also planning to update seven policies. We did update five policies this year, so I'm upping the ante a little bit. And I think all of this aligns with our strategic plan. Our goals are under the "serving our community" category, and specifically addresses training, mentoring, encouraging employee engagement and employee retention. Our goals under Risk Management. We want to offer some additional training offerings in this side of HR as well. We want to do some OSHA training, emergency preparedness training, and some AED and Stop the Bleed training. We want to update our safety handbook in accordance with local and federal laws and best practices, and then create an interactive training to educate the workforce. And we want to engage in quarterly workers' compensation meetings with departments so we can continue that proactive approach to claims management. So, looking at the Human Resources Budget, overall, the Human Resources projected budget increase is just a little over $8,000. Decreases or elimination of budget are identified in a number of line items. We did increase printing and binding and physicals just because we have seen increases in the cost of services in the past year. And one line item did increase more than 3%, and that's our software expenses for the NeoGov platform. As you may be aware, NeoGov has, we have five platforms with NeoGov. We do PERFORM for performance evaluations, INSIGHT for recruitment. We do ONBOARD for onboarding and offboarding employees. We have LEARN for our e-learning. And e-forms is that new platform where we're able to send and receive forms electronically with employees now. And the increase in software is based upon anticipated costs as communicated by NeoGov.
In that physicals category, do we send our employees? That's in the process of the hiring? And we send them to Carson Valley Health, I suppose, for that physical? That's not something we perform?
We do all of the, we do have required pre-hire testing for certain positions. The bulk of that line item is actually sheriff's office physicals for new hires. Moving on to Risk Management. Overall, the risk budget as presented reflects a decrease over last year. And I will call out the increases that are being requested and have been built into the budget. The deductible line item has been increased. This is a recommendation by our broker and actuals paid in fiscal year '24. Our liability premium, we did increase the, we used actual fiscal year '24 plus 3% in our calculations for liability renewal. We did increase training and education. We try to cycle this between Risk and HR. Human Resources-specific staff went to training this fiscal year. There are required trainings or recommended trainings to keep our risk staff up to date and current in risk areas, and we anticipate sending them to training this next fiscal year. One line item that I would like to call out to you is 5204.430, Workers' Comp Claims Self-Injured. The reason why you're seeing a negative amount is every year when the budget is calculated, we have to anticipate what claims may be paid in the following year. And in, we actually overbudgeted last year. And so, there is a large negative amount because we were able to look at actuals paid in fiscal year '24 and reduce that amount. And that's a very layperson's way of explaining that. So, if you need a more fiscal response, I would have to ask members of the finance team to come up and answer your questions.
No, but that's a significant number, and I appreciate that, so, yep.
Thank you. Workers' Comp Self-Injured Retention, we did increase because we did recently go through a state audit, and it was the recommendation to increase that line item based on the audit results. Another significant change in the risk budget this year is in line 521.250. We have a new line item for background screening. Over the years, as Human Resources has conducted background screens, each individual department was responsible for the costs associated with that. However, it does cause a great burden for not only Human Resources, but the Finance Department, because invoices come from the state and other agencies that we use, and all of the charges are on one invoice. And then we have to try to go to each department and determine the correct line item allocation for each department. It was becoming tedious, and so, it was agreed that instead of each department having their own line item for this, that we would centralize it under risk and make processing these invoices easier. There are a few departments, I believe DA Mark Jackson mentioned yesterday that he has a small budget for background screening. There are some departments that do maintain their own line items for this because they're doing specific screens outside of what Human Resources does. The other line item is software. We also have increased our anticipated cost of software. This is, again, due to NeoGov. Some of the NeoGov platforms are paid out of this budget. Any questions?
Very comprehensive.
I don't talk fast, and I probably have overanalyzed this for a week, sir. Self-insured dental. We made an adjustment for our administrative fees this year to reflect fiscal year '24 paid plus 3%. As I mentioned earlier, our funding has been set at current levels through county and employee contributions for several years. The county contribution for each employee is $37.30 per month. And employee contributions start at $32.77 a month and go up to $63.24 a month, based on, you know, what family, spouse coverage they elect. As I mentioned before, this fund has maintained a healthy balance, and it's been the desire of previous boards to maintain the current contribution rate. The county, I did speak with our county insurance broker regarding this, and he advises that current trends in dental show the cost of dental is increasing. And thus, a combination of usage and services billed will obviously affect the fund. And so, this is something that HR will continue to monitor with our insurance broker and return to this board when necessary to address contributions in the future. And to wrap up, we have no supplemental requests this year. And that concludes HR's presentation. Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you for your presentation. Any questions from the board?
Well done.
Very thorough. Thank you so much.
All right. Good morning. Wendy Lang, for the record, I was going to say my title, but it's a bit confusing these days. Human Resources Director and Acting Assistant County Manager. And that's why I'm before you here to talk about China Spring Youth Camp today. I appreciate and want to recognize the leadership of Ms. Davidson, who has appointed me to engage with China Spring as that function has come under her authority and your authority, and to provide a dedicated resource to that important transition and to the youth camp. So, I will jump into my presentation, although Ms. Vito will be a tough act to follow. China Spring Youth Camp serves a particular valuable need through the state of Nevada. We serve not just Douglas County, but the majority of the counties, excluding Clark County in Nevada. And we serve the youth of those counties. But I would also expand to say that we fill a need that helps not only the youth, but the individual counties and the state. Because what China Spring does is provide a resource and an avenue to address the youth who are struggling and to provide an alternative to incarceration. And that's a relief of burden on the state, and it's a valuable resource to the juvenile probation departments of those individual counties. China Spring works directly and is engaged with the juvenile probation departments of all of the counties. In fact, there is an advisory board, which is regularly consulted and utilized in providing input, and I appreciate Commissioner Hale's participation in that effort as well. I was just before you last week to speak about China Spring, and so, I'll make some reference to that. But I did want to share some performance measures and workload indicators with regard to what we're doing out at China Spring Youth Camp. China Spring served a number of residents in 2023. Currently, we have placed at the camp 19 male youth and five female youth, for a total of 24 residents. Although it is our objective to increase those numbers, particularly with the male youth, as we get some things aligned and staff trained and ready to take on additional youth in the camp. And these are the counties, just a list of counties, who sent youth and whose youth were served. And I've also shared with you a chart, just kind of a peek behind the curtains of the type of youth that we're serving. type of youth that we're serving, the types of crimes that they have committed. I think we talked about it last week, but I neglected to mention today that youth are sent to China Spring via court orders from the judges in their jurisdictions and recommendations of the juvenile probation departments. Just last Thursday, I was before you for a conversation that I'm sure we all found very difficult to have regarding the structure of China Spring Youth Camp, the revenue forecasts and the budget. And as a result of that conversation, we all agreed upon a revised organizational structure. And so what I have on the screen today is that revised organizational structure, which will be in place by the time we get to next fiscal year, which we're here to talk about. And so the full-time employees next fiscal year will be 36 full-time employees. The revenue sources, again, I spoke about this last week, but just as a reiteration, China Spring is funded from interim funding, which is statutory contributions from the counties that we serve, as well as the state of Nevada. And next fiscal year, that is set to be $3.4 million total from both of those sources. There are also a number of grants, most significantly ARPA grants, which the state of Nevada has allocated toward China Spring for next fiscal year. And then Medicaid reimbursement is anticipated at $450,000 for next fiscal year. The tentative adjusted base budget, I want to show an appreciation to Ms. Lewis for her support in preparing this. It's largely based on historical and realistically what we expect to spend in this coming fiscal year, with the understanding that we have to be very careful and cognizant of our expenditures and our revenue situation while we continue to work on the long-term sustainability of China Spring Youth Camp. The most significant increases you will see here are related to utilities expenses, so these are realistic expenditures based off of the trends we're seeing and what we expect next fiscal year to look like, based on what we're seeing currently. There are also some negative numbers, and that's largely due to shifting allocations from one line item to another, so that's a little bit difficult to follow where we've made some shifts, for instance, in the maintenance line items, where you see a significant increase in one line item and a significant decrease in the next line item. Another large change is professional services, and I am not entirely sure what occurred--
Ms. Lang, can we go just back one slide, please?
Yes, sir, of course.
I saw that on line 242362520165, Youth Services Division.
Yes.
Assesses.
Assessment.
Just, I'm a spelling fanatic, but, you know, maybe we could clean that up a little bit.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner, for pointing that out. I appreciate it. Did you have any specific questions or just the appearance of the line item? Okay, thank you. We will work on that.
Who were we referring to?
We do not have any donkeys at China Spring Youth Camp. That is in reference to the Youth Services Division assessment, which is, I'm going to have to defer to Kathy Lewis to expand upon that, but that is, in short, Douglas County's contribution to--
Just trying to provide a little levity here.
Thank you.
And I think Ms. Lang explained it. That is our share when Ms. Lang showed the slide that 45% of the funding comes from counties. That is our contribution to support China Spring Youth Camp. So that's what the state has determined. Our contribution is that we pay to the state, then the state turns around and pays us back to fund China Spring.
I should know this, but I don't. Do we get reimbursements for our expenses of our employees in oversight and all of that, HR services and?
Wendy Lang, for the record, great question. Yes, China Spring does participate in the cost allocation of those central services like human resources, risk management, and that is part of the expenses that have to be covered in this budget, yes.
I mean, so we pay the state like all the other counties that use China Spring pay the state. We have an assessment, but we also contribute a lot of staff time. So how does that staff time, do we bill the state for that, or do we eat that?
Wendy Lang, for the record, that general staff time, I think that you're referring to, such as my time, the time of human resources, the cost for workers' compensation claims, the IT and finance support, that is accounted for via cost allocation, which is something that non-general fund departments pay, and so that is a specific cost in the China Spring budget. And when we're looking at the sustainability of the budget or the revenues versus expenditures, that is one of the expenditures that's accounted for, that we have to ensure the revenues, which is primarily the state and the other counties, can cover that cost allocation, then that would be China Spring's share of essentially Douglas County's overhead.
And can we go back one slide? I believe it is, yes. The grants, I want to review that a little bit more. One of these is state grants?
Both of the 300 and change thousand-dollar grants are ARPA grants that were granted to us via the state of Nevada.
Okay, and those run out? When do those run out?
Do you remember, oh, you sat down.
I know there's some deadlines here that--
Yes, the end of fiscal year '24, '25, so June of '25.
Okay, and so that's what the state government has allocated to China Spring for the operations through the ARPA funds, which are running out. Do we have any assurances or any thoughts where, from, I suppose we're in talks with the state already about what happens after that?
We are, again, Wendy Lang, for the record. And one of these grants was specifically offset from the historical interim funding contribution that the state made, and so I appreciate the support, again, of Ms. Lewis and Ms. Cartwright and Ms. Davidson in addressing those needs with the state. We've had multiple meetings at different levels, and will continue to have, engage in ongoing discussions, and most importantly, submit funding requests to address not only returning the contribution to the level it has been historically, but also to realistically look at, over the past decade, you know, costs have increased and those contributions have not, and so being able to address that going forward as well.
I mean, obviously, I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, but it's, to me, it seems very, very important that the state understand that without this camp and without this funding, these individuals are going to be winding up in our penitentiaries, I guess, state penitentiaries, which are obviously a higher cost than running this camp, so I would hope that the state would really take a hard look at refunding, making sure that that funding gets covered, so.
Agreed. That's very important. Thank you.
Quick question. Did this Nevada Medicaid reimbursement estimated revenue go up? Because I was thinking it was estimated lower than that. That's for this fiscal year.
This is my estimate for next fiscal year. In the current fiscal year, it is less than this, based on what we've been able to accomplish in challenges that we've had in providing services. So this is a full, if we increase the number of youth, we can increase that estimate.
Yes, good. I think that's a good, that's a good number.
Thank you. And so on the professional services along that line, by the way, there is a substantial increase, and while I'm not entirely sure, I think that the professional services must have been accounted for in a different line item in this budget in '23 because it was zero, and that's not realistic, but along those lines, in order to be able to bill for our full potential of Medicaid revenues, we do need to have professional services through psychologists, medical professionals, and things of that nature. And so that is why you're seeing a significant increase of 1,800% in that particular line item. And again, there are many negative line items where we've offset and rearranged the costs into different line items to make this budget as accurate and manageable as possible, for an overall increase in the budget of 16%, largely based on the professional services need and the increase in utilities that we're anticipating.
We have a minus of 20, in the background screening.
Yes.
How is that going to be accomplished if it's not accomplished in this budget?
Thank you for the question. Again, Wendy Lang, for the record, Ms. Vito pointed out in the risk management line item that she had an increase reflected because that cost is going to be centralized to the risk management to provide better efficiency for the county to allocate those costs in that way, and so that is why you're seeing a negative here.
I guess my question is, is that appropriate? China Spring tends to be, you know, because it has funding from other counties.
Right.
Are we underreflecting what our actual costs are of running the program by doing that and reflecting that cost back on Douglas County individually? That's my concerns there.
Sure. Again, Wendy Lang, for the record, and that gets to Ms. Hale's point earlier regarding the actual cost of doing business reflected and the need that the cost allocation is anticipated and reflected accurately. So China Spring will continue to pay into the costs, and you can see central services cost allocation, for example, where those expenses are reflected. It's just a little bit more of a broad way of doing it rather than individually, which becomes very tedious. Any other questions? Thank you all so much for your time and your leadership, and I look forward to continuing to be able to talk about China Spring with you in the near future.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your involvement in China Springs. That's absolutely critical.
Thank you.
Thank you. As your involvement as well, Commissioner Hale's. Okay, after conferring with our county manager, that's the morning presentations, and we will take a lunch break, and we will be back at 1:30.
And we will be back at 1:30.[131.16]
Proud of each member of my team for cross-training and stepping up to fill in important roles while we've had those vacancies. We've also implemented recently new contract management software to track each of the contracts. Contracts that are signed directly by the Board of County Commissioners are tracked through the Clerk's Office. But there's a whole subset of contracts that we enter into countywide that require my level signature. I'm authorized to sign up to 50,000. And so my office has recently taken on that work and we have software to help us manage that so we can have access to these important documents at any time. We are supporting the transition of our new emergency manager, Kara Easton, and the newest member of her team, Tanner Dai. And Kara's going to give you, as I mentioned, a separate presentation, so I won't dive in that too deeply. But our office coordinates very directly with emergency management. We provide a variety of support functions. Our community relations team will speak with you about that. But we are plugged in directly with emergency management to make sure that as a community, we can respond, prepare, and deal with the aftermath of natural disasters as effectively as we can. We've also been supporting the transition of our newest addition to our team. I guess not the newest, you're not quite the newest. You've got six months now, right? Of our Economic Vitality Manager, Nikki Rudelbach. She's doing an amazing job. We're very lucky to have her. But as she's been getting up to speed, we've been making sure that she's plugged in and developing really important stakeholder relationships with community members and plugged in with our Economic Vitality Champions. We are supporting public engagement and public workshops through the strategic planning process, which was a heavy lift for my team. I'm really proud of the work that we did this year to support that. And we're very interested in how we can keep these important conversations going with our community and how we can make sure our community feels heard and that their input is reflected in the decision-making of the county commission. We hired a new Assistant County Manager. I'm so grateful to have Scott on the team and supported his transition from that role. Oh, he is in the back. Hi, Scott.
I'm in the county.
So grateful to have Scott on board. It really is the closest I could come to having a clone of myself, and I wish that I could clone Scott. We've also hired our new Chief Financial Officer and supported her in her transition. So grateful to have Kathy on board and very grateful for the quality of work that she's already doing. She has hit the ground running. There was very little learning curve for her, so thank you to Kathy. We've also assumed the administrative oversight of China Spring Youth Camp and partnered with Wendy Lang to support me and to support camp in the successful transition of assuming responsibilities for that role. Goals and accomplishments continued. The strategic planning process I mentioned, you guys know that check. We're so excited to be carrying that ball forward. Integration of all the new positions has been really awesome. Also, big victory for our team was the approval of the funding for the Justice Center. We may end up having to talk to you guys about some tweaks and some things moving forward, depending on where we are financially in this conversation, when we're ready to look at debt financing. But this was a huge achievement and accomplishment due in no small part to your leadership. Thank you, County Commissioners. We also supported the implementation of the Baker-Tilly Comp and Class Study and then also made sure that the county commission had the resources and data you needed to make good decisions regarding that implementation. We supported successful labor negotiations with DCEA most recently, but also DC SPA and SBU. We will be re-entering labor negotiations here in the near future. Several contracts are up. And members of our team will continue to support the negotiations team and have roles in that negotiation process moving forward. We have given multiple presentations, specifically I have, at multiple community groups, including the Financial State of the County Presentation at the Chamber of Commerce. My office is exploring how we can expand that presentation for the future and do an open house-type night, inviting the full community to attend that important informational presentation by my office. And I've also been exploring with Kathy Lewis how we might incorporate pieces of her presentation into my Financial State of the County Presentation for next year. I'm really excited to explore with the board what that could look like and how we can continue to increase transparency regarding financial decision-making for the county. Also, Mueller Parkway, huge victory. I feel like I'm taking ownership of a lot of things that are not entirely the responsibility of the county manager's office. First and foremost, I should thank the board for all of your leadership on each of these important matters. I could not do what I'm doing if I did not have the support and the direction from the board. It takes first decisions and vision at your level, and then I go and I implement. But also, all of these things require collaboration across multiple cross-functional teams in this organization. Mueller Parkway is bigger than just my office. It's going to require engineers, right, and all sorts of things, project manager, et cetera. So we're excited to break ground on Mueller Parkway soon. We solicited bids. And I believe the bid opening is this week. I think it's March 28th. Yeah. And so we will be bringing forward a contract potentially to award in April, so stay tuned for that. Performance measures. We have been busy. This should come as no surprise to the Board of County Commissioners that you have dedicated hundreds of hours to public meetings this year. And actually, the number of meetings and the number of hours you're dedicating is ratcheting up because we have a lot of important work that we are doing. The strategic plan was one of the reasons for the increase this year over last. But this year, fiscal year 2324, we had 39 regular meetings of the Board of County Commission. We had five off-site meetings, 12 special meetings, and we're averaging 29 agenda items a meeting, which is huge. And again, I cannot thank the Board of County Commissioners for your professionalism and your leadership on these important matters. It is very obvious to me that when we give you a binder this thick every two weeks to review, that you're reviewing that information. And we hope that my office is providing you with the information you need to make good decisions.
Except how to make the agenda smaller.
Yeah, about that. Maybe we should have made the strategic plan a little smaller. Okay. All right, now to the parts we've all been waiting for, I'm sure. I want to talk to you a little bit about the budget. Fun fact about hiring a new county manager. It should come as no surprise that when I took a look at the county manager's budget, I had some questions about whether or not some of these items appropriately belonged in my category or in my division, so to speak. Because some of the things that were in the county manager's budget were things that I did not believe the county manager had control over. And so if it required a decision by the Board of County Commissioners to allocate funding to that specific purpose or to spend those dollars, I actually moved it over to the county commissioner's budget. So what you can see in the county manager's budget is a negative increase, right? My budget actually went down 178,000. But the bulk of those dollars did move to the county commission budget. So you're going to see roughly a $166,000 increase in the county commissioner's budget, and I'll talk to you about why.
It's going to salaries, right?
Yeah, right? Don't you wish?
I don't think it went for salaries.
Second that motion. Is that a motion?
So there you go, the 178 on my end, 166 increase on your end. Let's talk about what those changes were.
So everybody cut their budget except us.
Oh, and for those following along in the packet with the actual specifics of the budget, you would want to look at county commissioners'. Budget begins on page, packet page eight. County manager's budget begins on packet page 11. So what were the basis or what were the big bulk of those changes? Under the county commissioners' budget, we did increase the travel amount due to three commissioners traveling versus two. It is typical when we have new commissioners also as part of an election, which we are anticipating potentially having new commissioners as a result of the election, that the newest member, as part of their efforts to get up to speed, is potentially going to be traveling. So we are planning for, in the next fiscal year, a rotation of about three commissioners traveling to any given events. As you're aware, the commission does travel to represent the county to Nevada Association of County events, but also to DC to represent the county at the federal level on matters such as the lands bill, et cetera. So we did increase that travel amount for the county commission. I was just making sure there were no questions. Okay. Meals, we did increase due to meals during travel meetings, special meetings, and events. There is a per diem amount paid to the county commission for your meals. That is a government rate that is set. In addition, we are providing light refreshments for long meetings and sometimes providing meals to the commission so that you can do business through the lunch period at various times. The commission knows better than anyone else how busy you guys are and how sometimes we have to schedule working meetings for you for lunch. And we've also on occasion been providing lunch to you here in chambers so that you can pick up within an hour after the lunch break the important business. When we have 29 items on average on the agenda, there's a lot of work to be accomplished in that workday. Professional services have been moved from the county manager's budget. These included Legacy Land and Water, Walker &amp; Associates, and Marcus Faust. These each, Legacy Land and Water, serve a very specific subject matter expert lobbyist role for us related to the lands bill and other matters that their office oversees. Walker &amp; Associates are lobbyists for us that serve at the state legislature level, and Marcus Faust and his teams are lobbyists for us serving at the federal level back in DC. In addition, employee awards, we added some funding. I think it increased to $600 total. But we do, for proclamations, have to print that on special paper frames, all of that kind of fun stuff. But then also, we are anticipating an increase in the number of retirements and service awards for this organization that need to be recognized and should be recognized at a board meeting. So we're excited to celebrate those employees with you. Contributions, this was an item that appeared under the county manager's budget, but this is, again, at the direction of the county commission. Please let me know if your desire changes, but we give funding each year to the Carson Valley Arts Council, the Friends of Danberg Ranch, the Douglas County Historical Society, Nevada Conservation District. I think that's everything. These are separate from the community grants. This is an annual contribution that these organizations have received from the county that has just been an amount that's dedicated to them, and the board oversees whether or not this is appropriate every year. If you want to discuss them in more depth, I'd be happy to bring that information back to you.
So we're not increasing these? We're not decreasing them?
No.
We're just shifting from one budget area to another?
Correct, yep. And this is at the board's discretion if you wish these things to continue. That's the reason why I moved them to the county commission's budget. Meeting expenses, we have increased in the county commission's budget because we mentioned on the previous slide that we have seen an increase in the number of off-site meetings. Since we no longer have the ability to meet at a regular location up at the lake, it is normal and appropriate for this county commission, where we're discussing a matter that only impacts the lake, for us to look at scheduling a special lake meeting for that purpose. However, when we do that, because we do not have that meeting space, there is a cost associated with renting space up at the lake to do that. So we have set aside some funding for that purpose.
So, I'm sorry, I don't want to sidetrack you, but this was of interest to me. So we paid to go use the, was it the TRPA building?
We did. We used to, yes.
Okay, and we have the event center now with office space there. Couldn't we just use that and not have to pay that? I see a shake, shake your head back there, so. Well, I think we're funding it, so.
So. Sure, Scott, if you want to talk, yeah, I'm happy to take a drink.
Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager, just because I think it's important. We spoke, Jennifer spoke before the Nevada State Legislature Committee on TRPA Oversight, and one of the things we brought up were to remove the restriction on events for local events. The reason we cannot use the event centers accounts as an event, which they are restricted by the total number of events they can have during the year to reduce traffic. Our argument was this is nonsensical because these local events are taking place at TRPA, at the high school, and we'd really like to use our event center and use it for free, but it counts as an event that they cannot have to attract commercial activity. So from the awareness standpoint, when we are talking to TRPA to say, remove that restriction, allow local events so we can use our local event center for public meetings, large public meetings that are taking place now in inferior locations. So I just wanted to grandstand a little bit on that comment.
I'm going to piggyback on top of that, if you don't mind. You know, this meeting expense is $10,000 in the budget. If you recall, before we moved the meetings to this location twice a month, we were in a contract with the Tahoe Transportation District Office for $50,000 a year. So this is a much less expense item. In addition to that, that 50,000 didn't include the cost of having staff go up to Lake Tahoe and be on hand for every consent calendar item that we had that would potentially was going to be moved off of consent onto administrative calendar. So that's a substantial chunk of money that we have saved by having the meetings here. And so $10,000 is a small price to pay for having to go up there maybe once or twice a year to conduct special meetings.
It's one-fifth of my cat cottage. There we go.
Thank you, Scott, for that. I forgot about my testimony. But yes, ultimately, it would be ideal for us to be able to hold public meetings at the event center. And we will continue to push to have that changed. Additionally, Commissioner Tarkanian, one of the reasons why we asked TRPA if we could utilize their space is because we wanted them to understand why we need meeting space. And we thought it might be nice for them to see how well-attended these meetings at the lake would be and why they're important for us as an organization. Okay, at this point, I want to shift gears a little bit and go to indigent defense. So for those who are following along, I'm in the budget on packet page 19. Okay, indigent defense, counties with populations of 100,000 or more must have county-funded Office of Public Defender. In our instance, we have a different arrangement because we're a population of 50,000. So we actually get reimbursed by the state for a portion of our costs associated with indigent defense. So our allocation, our annual allocation, is around 900,000. It does increase statutorily by the amount of inflation for that year or 5%, whichever is less. That means for Douglas County in this next fiscal year, our allocation will be 937,000. However, the budget that appears in your packet is the full amount of the budget, which is, I believe, 1.9 million. We'll get to that in just a moment. Because we expend those funds and then seek reimbursement from the state for the difference from the 1.9 to the $900,000 amount that we are statutorily obligated to cover as a county. Hopefully, I explained that okay. I will pause here to see if there's any questions on that. No, okay. We, of course, are seeing due to changes in the law, changes in caseload for our indigent defense contract attorneys. Currently, we have five public defenders, and we are at the recommendation of the state based on a workload study that was completed by the state, recommending that we add one additional contract this year. Again, that expense of that additional contract will be borne by the state because it is going to be above and beyond the 900,000 that we are required to commit to this program annually. Some caseload statistics are on the bottom of this slide, but just to give you an idea of how the caseload is increasing for this department. In January of '23, we had 59 cases, and January this year, that number increased to 80. And that trend continued through February with 49 cases last year and 75 cases for this year. I really, really appreciate Robin in our office. She has been working very diligently with our contract public defenders to capture a lot of the statistical information that is required to administer this program, to make sure that, in working with our indigent defense coordinator, that cases are assigned and that the workload is distributed amongst the contracts in a equitable manner to ensure that defendants, excuse me, who are in need of representation are represented by this county to the best of our ability. I'm really proud of this program and the work of the contract attorneys. And I thank very much Justin Klausser, who was our indigent defense coordinator, for all the hard work that he does on this.
I do have a question.
Yes.
My understanding is that there's a period of time after the representation during which the county could capture reimbursement for the services provided should the person become not indigent. Is this a true thing?
I don't know if there's a period of time.
Do you mind?
Sure.
Thank you. How do I turn it on?
It's on.
Oh, sorry.
I don't know if there's an actual period of time, but I know that the courts, if they are found to have, to not be indigent, they will charge the defendant, and they have a certain amount of time to pay. It's a lot, it's a smaller fee than they would pay for a private attorney typically. But we do have some cases where they have to repay, very few. I think there's two that I know of.
Okay, I might look into that sometime, but carry on. Thank you.
Thank you for joining me. Okay, the indigent defense budget is pretty simple when you're looking at individual line items. So the biggest increases to the budget this year are we have allocated 32,000 for rents and leases of equipment. We are in conversations with the state and Mr. Klausser, who I mentioned is our indigent defense program coordinator. We are exploring how we might identify some office space in Douglas County and how potentially by providing office space and office equipment as part of this program, we might incentivize more individuals to look at these indigent defense contracts. I can tell you when we have had a vacancy in one of these contracts in the past. Similar to what District Attorney Mark Jackson expressed to you, is it is incredibly challenging to find talented attorneys who are interested in doing this work in the state of Nevada. And frankly, there are, I think Mr. Jackson indicated, 80 vacancies in this region for work on the criminal side. I don't know how many vacancies there are on the defense side, but it has been very difficult for us to recruit individuals to fill these roles and to take on these contracts. The dollar amount associated with these contracts are very high. However, we are still struggling with recruiting. And so as part of our brainstorming with the state, because there are caseload ideal numbers that they have set as part of this workload study that they have completed, which I will tell you Douglas County has some questions regarding that study and whether or not those numbers are a true reflection of what we believe is realistic. However, we do have an expectation that we are required to meet, and so we are planning on adding another contract. But the way we're exploring potentially making this more appealing is by adding office space and office equipment as an option. And so that also will be at the expense of the state. That $292,000 increase in professional services is the amount of that additional contract that we are planning to add this year as a result, again, of that caseload study. Small equipment, again, if we do end up identifying some office space, we'll need to set aside some dollars for some small equipment and potentially some furniture for that office space. Happy to answer any questions on indigent defense before I move on. All right. Project management. I mentioned Scott McCullough is our project manager. He provides effective project management. His motto is "On Time, Under Budget." Wait, how does he say it?
You just said it.
"On Time, Under Budget." Yay, good. I'm glad I'm making Scott proud.
Ahead of schedule.
Ahead of schedule, ahead of schedule, under budget. However, he'll tell you when it comes to the Justice Center, we're going to be exactly on time and right at the budget. A little bit more logistically involved with the Justice Center. But these are a list. I won't exhaust you with the projects that he has worked on and completed. Many of them have been in partnership with other governmental agencies. We do bill for his services and seek reimbursement for his services from those other entities. A good chunk accordingly of his salary is reimbursed back to the county and covered as a result of the work that he does for other agencies. I do want to give the board a heads up, as he takes on more complex projects for the county, he's going to have less time to do work for others, and so we'll see that reimbursement revenue going down. Projects approved for delivery in the next year or so, here's a comprehensive list of the projects we've been working on. And yes, we absolutely do have this much work for our project manager in Douglas County. So thank you to Scott for his level of expertise. He is very good at what he does, and we're very lucky to have him. Any questions on that? Project management budget, for those following along, that was page 15. Looking in detail at his budget, it's tiny. Aside from his salary, he does have a vehicle allocated to him, and so there is a motor pool expense associated with that. And there's a slight decrease in that expense this year. All right, any questions for me before I turn it over to Nikki? No? Okay, great.
Good job.
Yay, with this, I'll turn it over to Nikki Rudelbach. Nikki, do you want to sit in the seat? I'll side seat with you. Good afternoon, everybody. Nikki Rudelbach, Economic Vitality Manager, for the record. For having me. Oh, I thought it was at the end of mine. Otherwise, I would have pulled it up. Sorry.
Thank you.
All right. If I knew I was following Jen, I would have more exciting presentation. All right, let's see here. So Economic Vitality, the division is responsible for implementing the Economic Vitality Plan and working with new and existing businesses to connect them to needed economic development services and resources. The Economic Vitality Program, established in 2010, utilizes an unprecedented approach with community members as champions to implement projects creating economic, social, cultural, and environmental capital. So as Jen mentioned, I am six months in, right? So I did not implement the program or build it, but I am taking over and carrying on from what Lisa built. So I'm very excited to work with all of the champions. We'll touch on that here shortly. And really, what I've been focusing on in my first six months is just kind of diving in and getting to know everything about the county. A lot of listening and a lot of learning. All right, so some performance measures and workload indicators. I've got some projects here. I work a half county manager and then half with the Community Development Department as well. So the business toolkit is a large part of what I'll be working on over the next year. This is a resource that is deeply needed, something that we've heard a lot of feedback on in a lot of the strategic planning program, process that we just went through. We've had a couple workshops already and a lot of community feedback just regarding the need for this and just the need for more of a, kind of a handholding through the process of starting a business here in Douglas County. What we've heard is we are hard to do business with. Do you have a question, Charlotte?
Yes. Along those lines, if in your process of learning the pain points, there's some that can be eliminated rather than telling them how to navigate them, that would be, I think, our preference.
Ideal, correct, yes. And I've been working really closely with Andrea and Tom in Community Development to figure out maybe some of those bottleneck areas that we can navigate through, either eliminate or maybe shorten the process on, which they're doing a ton of work, obviously, with some of the code already, so. And then I work very closely, also, community involvement, social media. So the Community Relations Team, Eric and Michelle, and just working on trying to get the business voice out into the community and making sure that we are celebrating wins or working on any of the struggles that they might be having and letting them feel embraced by Douglas County. The Champions Program, I think many of us are aware, I will go into a little bit more detail afterwards, but just working on those projects with my champions in the community and making sure that those are continuing on and moving forward without any hiccups, which they tend to have hiccups, so I'm involved quite often. And then, as I mentioned, Community Development. So we've been working on some projects. I'm working on the Business Toolkit and just trying to really dive in with Andrea and Tom and figure out how we can make that department just flow a little bit better in their connection with the community outreach. If I can just jump in, I want to commend Nikki and the Community Development Team for what I believe is a recent victory for them, which will be coming forward to you in the very near future. And Community Development will dive into a little bit more, in more depth with you. But Community Development just recently completed a fee study, which is going to result in some recommended fee increases for that department. I asked Nikki to partner with that team to reach out to stakeholders regarding the impacts, potential impacts of fee increases. Sometimes, all too often, government will recommend a fee increase without having the important conversations that we need to have to understand the impacts of the decisions that we're making. And I'm really proud of the work that Nikki has done, reaching out to her stakeholders in partnership with Tom. This is the type of work that absolutely is appropriate and needed for someone in her role. And thank you for that, Nikki. Thank you. All right, let's see here. We're going to move on to just a quick overview of the Champion Program. Later in the year, I'll dive into a full recap and update. But just so you can see a quick overview of the projects that were in the Economic Vitality Plan. So we have the broadband, creative distinct downtown areas, sports aviation destination, the Cale Drive Complete Street, development of an Art in Public Places Program, which is a win already for us, Worked-Based Learning Program, and then the Trails Master Plan. So I do work closely, at this time, I have a champion in all of the projects except for broadband. John Enter from the School District did retire prior to my hiring. And so that champion is due to be replaced. But the broadband project has derailed a little bit from what the state project, they dropped us unfortunately. And so we will be moving forward from kind of a beginning and trying to figure that, that project out again. So we'll find a new champion and move forward there. But otherwise, all of my champions, we've done a couple meetings each and I've got great updates, everybody's doing well. All of the projects are moving forward. Cale Complete Street is currently just waiting on funding. We've had a few hiccups there, but excited to see. My champion, Megan, is, for lack of a better term, very aggressive at keeping things on track. We'll continue with that. And then Art in Public Places, Brian Fitzgerald. He's been doing a great job making sure that art is relevant in our community. I work with Denise Castle on my Work-Based Learning Program and we're waiting on some grants here coming up in April. Deborah Lang is my Trails Champion and that Trails Plan was just approved as well. So looking forward to moving on and making sure that that vision is continued on and continue to build on that plan. And also with the Sports Aviation Destination, Linda Hibbert is my champion, but I'm also going to be working with the new manager of the airport, Heather, to make sure that we're all moving in the same direction. Before we move away from this slide, I just want to reference Commissioner Tarkanian's comments yesterday regarding some information that was shared with him from Ms. Kelly on the Cale Drive Complete Streets project. I will let you know that Ms. Kelly did reach out to my office last week to set up a meeting to discuss some of the funding challenges that they may be facing when they finally do get the funding from the federal government in place. Because of the delay, they are expecting some cost increases to this project. I will get the details on that. This is a capital improvement project. So this won't be for a discussion regarding the county's operating budget. This will be for a discussion in April when we talk about capital improvement projects at that time. We are working behind the scenes to see what funding may be available to fill in that gap. And we will be having, be bringing back a discussion to the County Commission with some additional sales. Excellent, and then my, just a...
Before we leave this page, the facade improvement program. Are we going, I didn't, I'm looking at the budget and trying to find that program.
So it's going to come to you with Community Services.
Okay.
With Brooke on Friday, I believe she's presenting, yes. It does fall under Economic Vitality Champions.
Okay, I just didn't want to lose it.
No, yeah. The funding will come from her, so. But she, Jen Alder, is obviously an Economic Vitality Champion. She's done great work and we are going into Phase Three, Year Three of the Facade Project Program. And they've done great work down on Main Street and we're looking forward to being able to help fund a third and successful year with them.
Can I also ask, before we leave this?
Yep.
Just a little more information, Washoe ISD is what? ISD, I don't know what ISD is.
Oh, the School District, I'm sorry. Just SD, School District. The School District dropped out of the program, which had over 120 points of contact for the broadband Phase One OSIT program that we were getting funding from. And that's why we were dropped from the program completely, Douglas County. There's no connectivity from, through the valley any longer.
So I'm, I'm uninformed, but does Carson City have this?
The School District?
No. If, if what we needed was coming through Washoe.
Oh, well, so the, the BEAD program was, the broadband program was partnering with a bunch of different entities, right, organizations. And then we were all coming together with some funding to create one big infrastructure. When Washoe School District backed out, they, they don't have the funding any longer to create such large infrastructure. And so they've pretty much just, I don't know, cut the funding in half or removed half of the infrastructure build out. And now Douglas County's been dropped out because they won't be coming this far into the area.
I'll just note, we were at the same meeting, the Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Meeting. And there was a huge emphasis on the need for high-speed broadband. So we'll need to learn more and see what we can figure out there.
Absolutely, there's more grants we've been looking into. There's a reconnect program, things of that nature that we're, we're trying to kind of start from, unfortunately, square one again. But we're going to get after it, for sure. All right. So goals and accomplishments. My main goals right now are to focus on the Business Toolkit. It's one of the largest projects that we've heard the feedback on and where we really need to make sure we're spending some time to help our community get through this process and open businesses that are wanted and needed here in Douglas County. We're going to continue working on the Economic Vitality website. We've also had a lot of feedback on the county website and the need for it to be more robust and additional resources added to it. So we'll be continuing on with that and working with Community Relations to create engaging and helpful content for the community. And then I'm, as I said, what I've been focusing on and will continue to is building the relationships and making some new partnerships in the community to pick up where Lisa left off and then also just find new opportunities for the Economic Vitality Program. And then continue to support my vitality champions and the respected projects. So far, one of our, one of my greatest accomplishments, I would say, is starting the Business Toolkit. That was something that when I was going through the interview process was definitely, you know, put, kind of highlighted in front and center that it was needed and something I needed to jump on as soon as possible. So we've held a couple, held some workshops, I've made some stakeholder meetings and we're looking forward to hoping, or having that completed hopefully by the end of the year so that we can roll it out and, you know, make business easier for everybody. And then also, I think I've just made some great headway developing relationships within the community and establishing the connection since Lisa's departure in June. Let's see here. All right, Economic Vitality falls into a lot of what the strategic planning process brought to light. I was involved, luckily, came on at the right time and I was involved in all of the workshops. And I heard a lot of the feedback and it was a really, really great learning experience for me. And I'm excited to be a big champion for the strategic plan as a majority of the goals of the county can be, can fall into an Economic Vitality bucket of some sort. I can kind of find a, find a way to wiggle into all of them. All right, any questions on that?
I just wanted to point out, and Commissioner Hales mentioned it earlier, the Chamber of Commerce, the Carson Valley Chamber of Commerce has developed a economic and development, Community Development Subcommittee. And Commissioner Hales and I both participate on that. But we really want, want to thank you also for your participation on that as well and other staff members. And that's where some of these ideas are coming out, percolating. And I think that's, that's really good. And right now, we're meeting on a monthly basis because there's just so much to cover and so much to get out. Maybe later on, we can go down to a quarterly meeting. But I, once again, I really appreciate your involvement in that. And it's certainly good to have your ears there so we can develop these kind of things. Because we've had that Business Toolkit now on the radar for a couple of years. But, but now that we see it come into fruition, that's really good. And I think our business community really appreciates that, so.
Thank you. If I can just add to that, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager. I think it is so important, especially for my office, to be plugged into these community relationships and community conversations. It is not okay for government to make a decision in a vacuum. We have got to keep these important conversations going. We have so much important work to do in the very near future related to Title 20 updates, updated the master plan. And we have got to get this right and to make sure that the Commission has access to data and opinions from stakeholders to help inform your decisions. The only way we can do this is with dedicated roles such as Nikki's. And so I'm sure there have been questions sometimes about what the purpose of an Economic Vitality Manager is. It is to make sure that we are informed and engaged in these important conversations and that we get these decisions right because they impact our community and especially our businesses on so many levels. So I just really cannot emphasize enough how grateful I am to have Nikki in my office. Thank you, Jen, I'm happy to be here. All right, this next slide's pretty exciting. It's the org chart, it's me.
And we're not going to reduce your FTEs, okay? Period, okay, just so you know, okay?
So, I mean, I do have my champions and I work, have a lot of partnerships in the community. But yes, it's, it's a party of one. All right, so this is a snapshot of my budget. And the exciting news is I did go ahead and decrease by 7% year over year. So, big win. Most of the budget increase, or decrease, sorry, was just due to cutting out some travel and some unused professional services that were there in the past. A lot of my large budget, budget adjustments that you'll see there are just reorganizing and putting into different funds, kind of carpet, oh my gosh, never mind. Reorganizing. Let's see here, sorry, I'm so nervous. Okay, breathe. While you're breathing, I'll direct everyone to their, if they're following along, we're on packet page 16. You can find the Economic Vitality Budget there. Oh, perfect. So the large budget adjustments are like the memberships and sponsorship increases. Just because I moved them around and I moved them out of Economic Development as a lump and just more into that carpet, oh my gosh, just memberships and sponsorships. All right, travel was very minimal in 2023 just due to personnel changes. Lisa left, and I didn't attend some of the travel that she had planned. And then, let's see here, I have memberships that, so there's no increase from anything new in my budget, there's no supplemental requests. And there is an increase in special events just due to additional sponsorships and more events that have been coming to light that the county manager has been invited to and that they're looking for additional sponsorships or our attendance, participation in, such as NDA, Tahoe Summit, the Spotlight Awards, things like that at the Business Council.
You know, I would observe that sometimes these percentages are, you know, they're, they're kind of misleading, right? Because the percentages are big, but the dollar numbers aren't really big. Okay, so, yeah, so we appreciate you.
Like the 478%. And then, those were the budget notes we just went over. Any questions on Economic Vitality? All right.
Looks like you skated.
Thank you for your time. All right, and next up for my team, Melissa August, from, she's my Chief of Staff, but she is going to speak on behalf of Community Relations today. I thought it might be fun to break up my presentation to hear from some of my other team members. So thank you, Nikki, I know I put you on the spot and made you a little bit nervous, but I think you did just fine. And now Melissa's going to take it away. And I don't know, did you want Eric to side seat with you and I take a step back, or?
It's, it's totally up to you, however you'd like to do it.
Eric, do you want the hot seat? Yeah, okay, I'm going to ask Eric Cachanero, our Community Relations Manager, in this August.
How do I get this to full screen? Does it matter?
I'll turn this off.
Jen, do you know how to make this full screen?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. All right, Melissa August for the record. First of all, I want to thank you guys so much, thank this, thank this Commission. This is a bit of a pioneer moment for this team because there's been a lot of hard work and dedication that's gone into really recognizing the Community Relations and Communications as, as having their own budget. So this has been a work in progress and I just want to thank you guys for, for honoring that. Really excited about that. So Community Relations, what is our mission statement? What do we do? Our Community Relations and Public Information Team aligns with the county's mission to deliver timely, informative, engaging, meaningful, and transparent communications. We strive for effective and strategic outreach, fostering trust and connection within the community. So functions, again, what do we do? External communications, and that's any type of communications that we, we do, external facing and with the public. We track public sentiment. Communications is, I like to think, not just a one-way thing, right? We, we want to know, we want to hear from our residents. We don't want to just talk to them. We just recently got...
We just recently got a new program that we're super excited about, and that's called Zen City, where we actually can scroll over all the different social media platforms and Facebook groups and all the different things, and it's all in one place. So we can really get a gauge on what people are talking about on one platform. Photography, videography, training on communications policies. We do have two policies, two social media policies, as well as one other policy that's about communications and information. And Eric and Michelle just did a great training for our Community Services Department, helping them understand the appropriate use of social media as well as how to use social media as an admin. We do special events, media relations. Our media partners are very important to us, as well as maintaining those relations with our media partners. Brand consistency. It's also very important to us that if someone picks up something, that they get brand recognition, just like you see with Starbucks, McDonald's, all of those things. We want people throughout our organization, whether they're at Community Services, Social Services, wherever they are, to pick up a document that says, that has our logo on it, and they know that it is the official source and that it is coming from Douglas County. It's very important. So crisis communications, and that's a little bit different than emergency communications. That could be something having to do with a situation where, for instance, maybe the president runs VHR and we are garnishing some national media attention unexpectedly. And we have to help that department who is now being surged manage that national media, but not necessarily an emergency.
It wasn't a VHR, though, correct?
Yes. It was the first thing I could think of off the top of my head. So press releases, you guys see those all the time. Eric and Michelle, the team, they do a great job of pushing all of those out. In our communications and public information policy, it does require that all of our press releases come through the county manager's office. And that is because we are the centralized location, again, to have that brand consistency, to keep that message consistent throughout the organization. And we really help, our team does a great job of helping. We have a lot of really complicated information in government, and we help the departments distill that information down so that the public can try to understand that and comprehend it. So emergency communications, that is obviously, Jen alluded to a little bit at the beginning of her presentation, what we do in combination with emergency management and some with the sheriff's office. All of us are, and what I would like to see for our team, I'll talk about this a little bit moving forward, PIO trained. We are trained through FEMA, and we are all trained the same way. I am currently trained, I am one out of three in the state of Nevada to have my MPIO. Went to the Emergency Management Institute to receive that. And if I have my way, I will have everyone on my team trained up to be that way as well. And the reason that we do that is that, so that we can serve in a joint information center when we have a regional emergency, we're all trained the same way. We can jump in, especially when we're in a 24-hour operation incident, we can jump in and serve, and we can serve in any joint information center regionally, or state, or federal, if so chosen. So we help manage the county website, or we do, we oversee the county website. We deploy surveys. You guys are familiar probably with the most recent one from the insight report that we gave you for the strategic plan. We do organize press conferences if we need those and all the logistics that go with that lovely thing. And then we distribute that county newsletter, and that's quarterly.
If I can just jump in here, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Jennifer Davidson, county manager, this will give Melissa a chance to catch her breath. She's a fast talker, too. We have a couple of those in our office. As an organization, I am really proud of, I have 16 years with this organization, and I'm really proud of just how far we have come with our brand, with our image, and with our reputation. That is intentional. That is managed. That takes a lot of work and effort. Each one of the presentations that you've seen before the county commission as part of this budget process have been reviewed by our team. The formatting, the font, the brand, all of it's consistent. We are a professional organization. Yes, we're from a rural community, but we do have an image that we are projecting, and we are trying to make sure that we inspire trust and confidence in our residents. And that very much comes from the image that we project and the reputation we are attempting to develop through the professionalism and the quality of the materials that we are producing out of my office and specifically out of this team. So I'm very grateful for their work. They have certainly raised the bar since Melissa arrived about almost 10 years ago.
Yeah, I'm going to go over that slide. 10, almost 11.
And it is continuing, we are continuing to raise that bar. So I just really appreciate the work that they have done to also help the departments put together the pages of presentation and be as prepared and polished for you as they could today as possible. That's a lot of behind-the-scenes resources that these individuals are doing and relationships they're building interdepartmentally. So I wanted to plug that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen, for that. All right.
I wanted to go back a slide, Ms. August, if you could.
Sure.
So you have identified a department function on here that I think is extremely important. Maybe it's wrapped up into there, but I think it needs to be called out in particular. And that is the efforts that your department, Eric's department, goes through in regards to monitoring all the public information that goes out and for hijacking, hacking, making sure that entities outside of our organization are possibly taking our information and using it for nefarious reasons within our community and without our community. That is an important departmental aspect. I don't know that you've called out on here. I don't think that's called crisis management, but, or communications. But I think that's something that you need to take, you do a very diligent job at doing that, and I want to salute you for that. I know it was a couple of years ago now, I learned my lesson. I got caught in, by your department in distributing some inaccurate information when it came to the Tamarack Fire, and I had to retract that. That was important, and I appreciate you calling my attention to that. You did it in a very professional manner. You didn't say you have to take this down, but you made some suggestions, and I really appreciate that. And so I'm very careful in what I distribute, and when I think there's something that needs to be distributed, I call you and we talk about it, and you jump on it and you get it done, and I appreciate that. So I think it's important that your department take credit for that because that is a critical element of making sure that our brand stays our brand and that we don't have individuals taking our information and using it to their benefit outside of our organization. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
I also wanted to, but I agree, but I also wanted to spend just a moment on that brand consistency thought because, and I was kind of going the same place. Am I making sure, as one commissioner, that my actions and words are consistent with our brand? And I mean, to the extent our brand is the values listed in the strategic plan, I am familiar with those, but I mean, maybe this board needs to do a little training on what is our brand and how do we, our actions and words, how do we be careful to make them consistent with our brand? So maybe some training and maybe some self-reflection would be a good process for us at the right time.
Sure. Thank you for those comments. We do have a brand and style guide that we would be happy to give you as well as, I think, some training would be helpful. And I know we've administered media training in the past as well, if any of you guys would be interested in that because sometimes that can get a little tricky as well. Okay, org chart, like, we have many that we've shown here for you, but as you can see, we all report to Jen, and then Scott, and then myself, and then the Community Relations team falls under that. Community Relations Manager, who is Eric here sitting next to me, and our new Community Relations Specialist, who is Michelle, who was formerly our admin and promoted. We're very, they do wonderful work, and obviously, communications is a passion of mine because I've been doing it, it's really the heart and soul. But I want nothing more but than to see them be successful and see them do things in ways that I would have never imagined. And one other thing that you don't see on here is our intern position. We have worked solely with UNR from the Reynolds School of Journalism to have an intern every year. I believe, I'm not sure where Joey's at now, but we did have 100% placement in the field of communications after leaving our office. And that's something that I was really prideful or proud to say. And we learn just as much as that from our interns as I think they do from us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Jennifer Davidson. Just to make sure that we're really clear, ultimately, because given the financial circumstances that we're under, it is the county manager's intent to unfortunately give back that intern FTE position. It's not a huge amount of money, but we understand that we probably shouldn't be looking at intern opportunities when we're examining elimination of other positions within our organization. If we ever do have the opportunity, again, it is incredibly beneficial for both us, learning from these students who are on the cutting edge coming out of school with really, really awesome information and the latest in tech perspective. It would be nice to be able to bring that back at some point, but for now, we're giving it up.
We'll talk about that a little bit more when we get further along in the slide, too, and supplemental. So a little bit of the background and history, as Jen said, in 2013, a community relations position was created and approved by the Board of County Commissioners. I can't, it was that long ago that I came to Douglas County. So very thankful for the creation of that position, it was just one solo. In 2018, we did create the community relations intern position. In 2020, the community relations intern position was upgraded because what happened in 2020? And all of a sudden, the need for communications and dissemination of information quadrupled due to the COVID-19 crisis. So very thankful to our county manager, Jennifer Davidson, who said, hey, our team needs some help. I was called to the regional joint information center, and there was no one here to stay with Douglas, and we needed a full-time person to help disseminate all of that information. And then in 2020, a communications audit was conducted by Rad Strategies. The goal of the assessment was to help the county build consensus regarding the county's communication strategy and identify the resources needed to meet the county's communications objectives. So some of those recommendations, and I thought it might be kind of helpful, there's a lot, if any of you guys want to read through the entire report, just a skinny. So what I felt we've accomplished, we've developed a strategic communications plan, a three-year plan, and we have accomplished some of those things in that plan and some of the things we're still working on. We developed a personnel plan and a departmental structure, a plan for ongoing professional development, like I said, PIO training. In fact, Eric and I are going and possibly Michelle to ECO, and then as well as other professional development opportunities for communications professionals. Very important that our staff continue to be, as Jen said, on the cutting edge of that. Through our brand integration, I think we've already covered that, multi-channel communications based on audience. We, I'm going to go on this a little bit in the next slide, we make, how we create our content and how we connect with our audiences is based off data. And so we have kind of looked at that and established different channels based off the information that we have collected from our public. We review and plan for enhanced digital strategies, and we create brand consistency. And what we're focusing on, develop and assign an annual department budget, that's what we're here to talk to you guys about today. Streamline tactics and activities, streamlining things a little bit better, which we've had some communications about, or some conversations about that in our strategic planning process. PIO support and cross-training, and we're working on getting there, internal audience communications plans, so working a little bit more on our internal communications. And what does, if we have good internal communication, we start from within, and then that translates to the public. County toolkit for our one voice messaging. Again, we talked about some of that in the strategic planning process and more consistent communications and integration plans with our residents. Any questions about that?
Yes. The multi-channel communications based on audience, are you talking there, that's a real technical term, right?
Yes.
Does that mean employing all different media platforms dependent upon your audience? Is that...
Yeah, depending on our, and I'll get to that, and then a little bit more, it might make more sense on the next slide, I think. But yes, so, you know, all of our social media, we're on Instagram, go ahead. Yeah.
Thank you. Eric Cachanero, Community Relations Manager, for the record. Yeah, just touching on that a little bit, we have different audiences on different channels. For example, someone who may be on Facebook may not be on Instagram, so it's a different audience. So a lot of times when we push messaging out, we cater it specifically to that channel. As you know, Instagram is a certain character limit, so we typically focus on short little bursts of information, whereas Nextdoor and Facebook tend to be a little bit longer form. We do generate different responses on those platforms. And to be honest with you, sometimes it's surprising and kind of interesting. We may push something out expecting it to get a great response on Facebook, and it may perform a little less on Facebook and better on Instagram. So we try really, really hard to be diverse in these channels, pushing out as much information and hopefully catering it to the audience the best that we can.
I can tell you, I don't tweet, I don't Instagram, I, you know, I do some Facebooking, but that's about it, you know? So, yeah, thank you.
I think it's important, too, when we say multi-channel, it's not just social media. We still very much rely on our traditional media, our news outlets, our TV, our print, and even flyers. And we have a demographic here who does still want paper in hand. So in some ways, that's a little more challenging because we are, the expectation is to provide so many different forms of information. But as you, I will show you a little bit more in the next slide. Maybe it's the one after this, I'm sorry. Okay, so, goals and accomplishments. So perimeter, the final phase and launch, we came before this board to talk to you guys about that, so I think you're all familiar with that. The communication survey, it must be in the next slide, I'll show you a little bit of the skinny on that. So we deployed that because we want to find out, I always use the term, we don't want to just throw spaghetti at the wall and then hope that it sticks. We are bombarded daily by so much information and communication. It's very hard to cherry pick out the things that matter to you, and it's very difficult for our residents to find those things. We may be pushing things out, but we want to have a very strategic approach in what we do. And so we launched communication surveys to find out how people are communicating, when they're communicating, and, you know, what they want to see from us. So we're not just making that decision, we're asking the public what they want. Social media training, like I mentioned, Douglas County Direction Newsletter, Great People, Great Places, and an employee program that we created, and that's a peer-to-peer recognition program that we do quarterly for cross-departmental recognition. It's just a great way for us to recognize each other. The Community Relations Department is in charge of that. It fosters that internal communications piece that I spoke about earlier. We created a Douglas County Instagram page, as Eric mentioned, communications through press and social media, resulting in earned media. So just because we disseminate something to the press does not mean that they have to print it. So when I say earned media, that means we really said, hey, because of our relationships with you, we really would like it if you could print this. Or if you would, so the things that we're putting out, and also if we put something out on our channels and they just picked it up. Sometimes we're not even, but we're putting it out there and they contact us and say, hey, we would really like to feature this. What do you guys think? We always love it when that happens. Strategic plan, communications effort, I think you guys are familiar of all the outreach that we did. We earned regional media for the DCSO recruitment day. So we put that out to assist the sheriff's office. I think I spoke to undersheriff this morning, and he said they were averaging about five people that would come to test. And this big thing that we did for the recruitment day and then the regional media push and everything that we put out on socials, they had 20 to 25 people that day, I think it was. So a bigger turnout, and sometimes you really need those aggressive pushes, just press and putting the word out and the outreach in a different way that you're trying, and we assist departments with that. And in FY '23, we reached more than half a million people on Facebook alone. I think that's a pretty impressive number. So good job, team. Eric.
May I ask a question about that?
Yes.
The perimeter, the top on the list, the perimeter
Yes.
Launch, final phase and launch. That is, if I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong, but is that the emergency egress route platform where you can identify where an emergency may be occurring and it'll give you escape routes? Is that that program?
Somewhat, yeah. We came before this board and the final phase of that, and right now, actually, it wasn't the final phase, but yes, it's an app, it looks like that, it's on your phone, and it's by zones, and it'll tell you, you know, if there's a fire, a flood, a road closure. We don't really do evacuation routes, per se, but we tell you what roads are closed and that type of thing. And then when the road closure is on there, you can click on it, and it will tell you where to go. During an incident, we don't usually have evacuation routes established on there because they can rapidly change, as you know, right?
I was probably using the wrong term there.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, you can see where the incident is and try to... I'm just saying, you can see where the incident is and try to avoid it?
Yes.
And also then, where it is, you can self-determine how you want to avoid that.
Correct. And I, the final phase, actually with that, is the education piece of that, which we're working on with our emergency management team. It doesn't just stop with launching the program, we are currently meeting with neighborhood watch groups and HOAs to talk to them about preparedness and to do demos. The sheriff's office is also involved in that because it's extremely important that we not only wait until an emergency to get people ready, we have to get them ready before the emergency, and we have to, we have to do our due diligence in educating the public about that.
Is that a downloadable app, or is it a QR code, or how do we go about getting, how does our public go about getting that app?
Eric Cachanero, Community Relations Manager, for the record, thank you for your question, Commissioner Gardner. This system is very user-friendly for people that may not typically use social media or need to know how to navigate an app, which can be a little bit of a learning curve sometimes. The cool part about this program is, in the case of emergency, we simply publish the link, which will remain static during times of emergency and outside of times of emergency. The person clicks on that from either their computer or their smartphone, and they see the map immediately. There's, there's no need to download anything.
No app.
No app, nothing like that. So it's very user-friendly, like I said, for people that may not have those technical skills.
Is that something like Waze in the cities?
Eric Cachanero, for the record, kinda. It doesn't necessarily show traffic, per se, but it does, like Melissa mentioned, say there was an area that was undergoing some sort of emergency, it has the ability to draw a perimeter on that area, alert the public to what problems may be happening, and then we are actually very easily able to update, live update, the app as we're going through an emergency. So the thought is, instead of having to relay information from, you know, 10 people down the line to get to the final person to update the app, we can go in there and make these changes immediately, and they show up immediately.
Thank you.
Jennifer just reminded me, too, to plug Reverse 911. That is the longstanding system that we have. So in addition to the perimeter platform and our preparedness messaging that we do a lot, we also include the Reverse 911, and that is probably the best way, and we tell people, because that immediately alerts your phone. This is more if you're, you know, you have that leisurely time to, you know, look up at the information and see it in real time. The great thing about perimeter, too, as a reminder, during the Caldor Fire, we had different jurisdictions putting out different information. I think we're happy to say regionally now, I think everyone is on board all the way to Eldorado County. So we are all using the same platform, and that means to the public, they're, it doesn't, it all looks the same to them, they're using one platform. So if you're going, if you're leaving Douglas County, you're going to Eldorado County, or if you're leaving Douglas County and you're going to Reno, you're going to see the same thing. It's all on the same platform, which was very problematic in the recent fires that we've had. Okay. Oh, sorry. Okay, so public engagement data, this is the data that I was going to give you guys. So in 2023, we did a communication survey, and we did one prior with that RAD Strategies assessment, but Eric and I thought it was important to do it again because that was pre-COVID, and, you know, people's communications changed after COVID, among many things. We surveyed this time nearly 400 residents, and more than half get news primarily from social media. Facebook is the number one platform, followed by Nextdoor. Respondents identified community news as the most requested topic. Three out of the four respondents used Facebook groups as primary methods of communication, and half the respondents want a printed Douglas County newsletter. In addition to that, if, the number one thing was the community news, the number two thing was breaking news, like road closures, and if, you know, someone has secured the scene or there's any impact to their neighborhood or area. And number three is community happenings. People love to receive information about community events, holidays, they really engage with us and ask us questions about what's going on in the community, all the great things that are happening at community services, you know, everything from how can I get my kids signed up to Kids Club, but we get questions all day long about all the services that we provide, all the events that are going on, and if we don't have the answer and it's not a county event, we try to point those people in the right direction. Okay, so budget, a little bit, so this is another one of those shifts that Jen mentioned. Again, this is a pioneer moment for us. So we took the salaries out of the county manager's budget and remove, so the community relations manager and the community relations specialist and the community relations intern, which Jen just said, we will be giving back to you, and I will talk about the supplemental webmaster request. So those would also be included in here as well. And then just a couple of small line items that I kind of have for your consideration here. Travel, that would be for them, like we talked about, and traveling to get that training, the appropriate training that they need for PIO training through FEMA, extremely important, the registration to any type of conference in-state or PIO training that they would need. Memberships, currently, the memberships that we have are some of the programs that we use, I think it's Adobe Survey Monkey and Constant Contact, which is the program that we use to send out our newsletter. Training and education, again, some of those areas that we spoke about for professional development, real skinny, the office supplies budget since they're in with us. And then the software is for a program called Archive Social Media and Zen City. And Archive Social Media archives all of our social media accounts, so it basically records everything that is on any of our social media platforms in case we are asked to produce those as public record, and we have been on numerous occasions. Any questions? Okay, so webmaster supplemental request, so a little history, the Douglas County website background, in 2017, Douglas County put out an RFP for a website redesign. I was here at that time, and a committee composed of the county assessor, the recorder, the library director, community services, community relations, and IT collaborated. The committee decided to award the contract to Civic Life, and Civic Life also maintains websites for DCSO, the library, community services, and the Douglas County Clerk Treasurers So the current workflow on the website right now, we do not have a person, like I talked about last time, that everything just goes through them. The departments have administrators, and these administrators are not content or web folks. They are doing the good work that they do, they are running services and providing, you know, they're doing what they do. There are 66 admins who need to be consistently trained and made aware of website updates and compliance, and the county manager's office does maintain the homepage, photography, and videography, and we do often draft frequently asked questions pages and things of that nature. But the county departments have those web admins that can, that do the content for their own individual departments. So areas of opportunity, we currently have high turnover in those admins because we've just had high turnover in the organization as a whole, and so we have to go back and retrain each single one of those admins. And we do see some areas of opportunity, improve navigation and usability, a website upgrade or refresh, of course, that would cost money, but a long line, a long down the line, that would be great to have a sole person to run this project again who could take on some of this work. ADA compliance and broken links, somebody has to be constantly scouring the website for broken links and ADA compliance. Refresh of the Douglas County Intranet to streamline internal and external communications. Again, the Intranet is an internal website for employees, so kind of mirroring those two, but having an active voice for the employees versus the public, but the same information. So we sent a survey to our website admins, and we launched that in 2022, and the majority of them answered that they need more training, and they would like to have someone dedicated to the website to assist them with content and compliance and usability on a regular basis.
Before we move on, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, for the record, I know, and my team is very aware, that the website is a pain point for this organization. We have a lot of staff members across this organization who are really good at thinking like a government employee. That does not always translate to appropriate content and organization of a website, thinking about the end user. I cannot tell you the number of times where I have had to click six times to get to something or read through pages and pages of text. Our staff members are well-intended, but they're not professional webmasters. And so there is an absolute need for a webmaster position, we believe, for this organization. There could be a total web, I have heard from this commission in the past, a total website redo, but that will last for approximately three months before our people start touching stuff and moving things and adding content and moving content and creating links and breaking links. I cannot stress enough how important this will be for us moving forward.
So I will weigh in on that, and this is something that I recognized when I was a member of the public, trying to navigate our website, I just found it similar to what Ms. Davidson indicated, trying to go back and forth and try to, try to, try to think about where something might be, okay? It just didn't seem to be user-friendly, okay? You know, maybe it is for staff, where, you know, but they pretty much work from the internet side of it rather than the front side of it, and, and so I recognize the need, I feel like we've had a need for a webmaster for some time, and I've articulated that to our previous county manager and also to Ms. Davidson. The problem is, is finding the funds this year for it, and, and I, unfortunately, that probably is going to be a heavy lift. I, you know, because I, you know, that would be the, as I, as I refer to it, it'll be the ribbon and the bows on the box, and I don't know that we're going to be able to get to the ribbons and the bows this year. So anyways, I recognize the need.
I also recognize the need, but I also recognize that it's going to make it a lot more efficient for people to use it and get the information they need to finish their job. And what I would suggest, having been a project manager in the past, get to the people who are going to use it and find out what they need before you, before you make the first entry in terms of code, okay?
I would think we would want this for our brand.
I would think we've all had our comment.
All right, well, thank you very much for the feedback. Here's the cost up there, as Jen said, we did, you know, relinquish the intern position as well, so that's kind of factored in there for you to see. Understanding that this is a difficult time, we just wanted to bring it forward anyway so we can have this conversation with this board, and we want to let you know, too, that we do know, we do see it as a problem, and we're doing our best right now to try to, you know, do what we can in the interim, so we appreciate that. So supporting our strategic plan, we always want to bring, when we bring these things forward, tie back in. So the Douglas County Strategic Communications Plan, I put in there, you guys don't have a copy of that, but Strategy Two, Improving Communications and Communications Tools and Tactics, Improve, and this is tied to that webmaster supplemental, Improve Website Usability and Update the Process for Content Workflow, Refocusing on Maintenance, Consistency, Branding, and Usability. So I think that hits on everything that you guys just said, ironically. And then in the Douglas County Strategic Plan, in the Challenges section, we saw there was an increase, we were asked to increase public trust by being the source of reliable, transparent, and accurate county information. We don't have a designated staff for the website, and the public reports low trust in transparency and approachability. So our goals, we want to increase public trust, recognized as the reliable source of accurate information, streamline information, develop and implement a process to streamline information sharing between Douglas County departments and with the public, and improve communications tools, improve the website usability, update the process for content workflow, refocusing on maintenance, consistency, branding, and usability. So those are all in, currently in the strategic plan.
And to accomplish that, you need a webmaster.
Yeah, among other things. So back to the strategic plan insight reports, I just want to, just a reminder, the word communication is mentioned 42 times. This highlights our community's desire for transparent, consistent, and meaningful communications. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
I think everybody stomped on this one already. Melissa, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Well done.
Mr. Chairman, if I may conclude my remarks, it's the county manager, if you're ready.
Please do.
Thank you. So we did have the one supplemental request, which is the webmaster from my office, but also nowhere in my presentation, Scott just reminded me that I should take this opportunity to explain to the board that I did remove the community grant funding from the county manager's office budget. Actually, I think it fell into General Services budget is where it got removed. So the community grant funding will appear in supplemental requests and will be part of the supplemental conversation for your consideration. With that, that does conclude the county manager's office presentations. We ran two minutes over, I'm really surprised, Kathy, at how exactly we have been on schedule throughout these presentations. I'm excited for the next team, it's community development, they're on deck, but I thank you for this opportunity to speak to the board about the important work that my office is doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we are going to take a 10-minute break, and then we will go into our last session.
go into our last session. Okay, we went a couple of minutes over, that was out of necessity. So, Mr. Delaire, if you would be so kind, you're on.
Thank you, Chairman Rice, and I appreciate everybody's indulgence today. We'll see how long, I know I'm between you and happy hour, but I'm sorry about that. I didn't, I didn't put that together when I, when we volunteered for this time slot. So, yeah, so anyway, thank you for everybody, and I really want to take a shout-out to the finance team. They have been really remarkable, I know everybody has really been giving them kudos throughout this budget presentation, and, and I really appreciate all their efforts and their work in, in developing this, that you, you can just come and, and see it. So, Tom Delaire, Community Development Director, I have Andrea Pauline here, she's our deputy director for community development as well. And our mission statement for community development is to enhance the quality of life and, for the citizens of Douglas County by providing the highest quality and professional service in the areas of building, engineering, planning, code enforcement, we added VHRs from the original one, and administration. So you'll see that we do provide and we are responsible for the administration of the building and safety and code compliance and planning for Douglas County. And that's really what our office does. We have a lot of permitting agencies or different divisions that we have, each one has a plan review process, the building department, planning, engineering, vacation home rentals are all permits, code enforcement then enforces, enforces it. So they don't issue permits or have an application to process. So it would be difficult to have those individuals pay for themselves through a permitting process, but everything else, we are aiming to try and charge fees to cover the administration and code enforcement through the building fees and planning and engineering and vacation home rental, especially that one, because that was directed by you guys to actually cover the, the costs of that program. But it is new this year, you'll see, 515 is a new fund, and I want to thank Kathy for allowing us to do this. We've been pushing for this for a couple of years, and I'm happy to see that we're able to start tracking it and be able to just pull a report up on this fund and, and be able to verify our revenues versus what our expenses are. And, and it'll, it'll be a much easier process in the future to show you and share with everybody, the public especially, on how much we do bill for that service. So, our performance measures, our performance measure number one, this has been going on for years, I think our tables go back to the 1990s on permit numbers, and it does get reported at the end of the year budget report for finance, but our perform, our strategic framework for this is serving our community with quality county services and balanced growth and infrastructure. And, and this is just the building permit side of things, where we have issued 2,505 building permits this year, which is obviously higher than years past. So staff is really pushing it out, pushing out those permits, the digital submittals and easy permits for water heaters is, has been really helpful in doing that and, and getting that done. And then also, we do track how many permits. There's a lot of other things that we track here, but these were the performance measures in the department that, when I got here, this is what we've been reporting on. But 3,165, and that includes all of planning and engineering permits as well, does not include the VHR permits. That'll be another slide at the end. Community development, our goal, in our, in community development, our goal is really to try and implement the, the master plan. We have 53 high priority action items, and we are really knocking those out. I think there's a handful left, eight to 10, that, that we have left in the implementation that we're not actively working on. And then our goal number two is the transfer development rights study, which is underway right now. You guys, we've invited some of you to, to attend on April 10th and 11th. We have the team coming into town to do interviews with stakeholders and, and a technical advisory committee, and we're excited to get that project underway. And then goal number four is just to keep, continue to approve, improve on Acela and ACA and DIGIPLANS. So those are, the, those are the permitting, our digital software that, that is used for processing all the permits within Douglas County, and staff is learning the program and actually being able to program the program. We got a couple of them that have gone to training and, and learned how to do that, and we're thankful for them and all their efforts in making it a much easier process to navigate for not only staff but for the public. Community development began a large scanning project back on January of 2023. This was that 600,000-plus project on, on scanning all the files in the basement, and I'm happy to report there are no more building files in the basement. We still have a lot of planning and engineering boxes we're going through, but all the building files are out of the basement in digital form, online, and it is awesome. And so they're working on, on getting the building files out of the storage facility out at the airport. We are fully staffed, and that's a huge accomplishment, and we do have, and we'll talk about it more in, in the next couple of slides, but we do have one, this Building Inspector Senior Position that is not filled, that was a fairly recent new addition, and we don't expect to fill that for another couple of months, so we can have some conversations with county staff in the future on, on maybe eliminating a building inspector position, because we, I don't believe we need five inspectors. So we'll talk about that in the, on the next, on one of the slides here with the org chart. Title 20 Updates is moving, moving a little slow, we are focused on TDR Study, and we just got the Appendix B pass through. You guys really appreciate that support, the community support in that. Genoa Historic District, they went through a, a code revision, and we've been through three revisions. So currently, actively right now, our staff is not working on updating Title 20 622, and we're happy to report that. South Shore Area Plan, South Shore Area Plan is under, under, under contract with Ascent Environmental, TRPA is partnering with us on that, and also the hospital, and that draft document should be out in April, so next month. And, and then we want to roll right into, and we'll talk about that later, roll into the Tahoe-Douglas Area Plan. Development Agreements, Andrea's been really busy learning about development agreements and, and cleaning those files up and making, making them really clean to, so we are able to present them to you on every two-year cycle, and we have a number of them that we're walking, watching and tracking so we can get rid of some of those off of the books. So she's been, been really handling all of that, and I really appreciate all her efforts in, in making that happen.
Can I ask a question on the previous one? The, the South Shore Area Plan update, is this the same as the community plans, or is this something different?
It is the replacement for the, for those community plans. So it'd be like in our master plan, we have a community plan area, it would be that, it would be comparable to that. It's the actual plan that TRPA would use in the future. Right now, they're using those old plans from the 80s, I want to say, or 90s maybe. They're like typed out, reports on zoning and, and things like that. So this will update that for the South Shore area and then everywhere else up in Tahoe.
So, I mean, I see why that's really necessary, I'm happy to hear about this.
Yeah.
But if the master plan includes components of community, community plans, will the other community plans be updated at some point, or is there a plan for that? Plan to plan.
In the valley, the community plans within the valley being updated?
South, South Valley, or whatever.
Yeah, so we have a number of community plans within Douglas County, that is, South Shore Area is one, but we use the community area plan instead of the master plan in that case. You'd go to that plan specifically if you were dealing with any property located within that plan area, or the Tahoe-Douglas Area Plan, which Douglas County started, I think, in 2014, 2015, and we never finished it. So getting it across the finish line is, is huge, and it's something that I think that's been a rub for TRPA and Douglas County for some time. So getting it across the finish line is important, plus with the hospital coming in, and, and that we need to change the plan in order to allow the hospital there. So, so that's what's happening now.
So, that's great, but what about the community plans like North Valley, or Mindon, or Gardinerville, or South Valley, or South County?
We'll talk about it in supplemental, but right now, we don't have an item in the budget to do a master plan, we need supplemental in order to cover the costs of, of helping us with that.
And do, do all those plans necessarily have to be updated when the master plan's updated?
No, per NRS, we're required to do five years' updates on the master plan, so that's the one we have to do. South Shore Area Plan is a TRPA requirement, and any new plans being generated in the, the TRPA boundary within the Tahoe Basin has to have that area plan. And so we're just trying to update those to get in compliance with what they require, yes.
So, Mr. Delaire, yes, I know, I promised Commissioner Kerkanyan to keep the questions very short during this period of time, so I'll, I'll keep this short. I did see in development agreements, we have, you said approximately two, but two is a very definitive number, approximately is not a definitive number, but two more development agreements that will repeal by the end of the year due to completion, so I'm glad to see that, because these development agreements in most cases have been on the books for 20-plus years, so, so that's, that's good news, I guess. That wasn't a question.
Yeah. Thank you for that. And, and with the approval of last board meeting's item, and the last board meeting that you guys had, we funded through the adjusted opening fund balance criteria, we have one more that we can actually fund now. We're still trying to get the contractor to pay for the streetlight, but once that goes in, another one's off the books. Acela and DIGIPLAN project, we are, continue to work through making improvements in, in both of these programs, Acela and DIGIPLAN. DIGIPLAN is what the staff uses for our plan review. So DIGI, Acela is where the permit gets uploaded, and then in order for it to open up in the system, we use DIGIPLAN in order to do plan review. So we are making some improvements there. And then here was the VHR accomplishments breakdown that, I'm sure you guys have seen this again, before, from Ernie, who tracks this stuff like a hawk. And, and so we do have the tier four, tier one, 64 tier two permits, and, or total permits this year, that was what we issued, and there were no tier three applications at all. So, so we continue to have 15 tier three applications, and so 593 is where we're at, and I understand we're losing, you know, four to five a month up there in Tahoe right now, so we'll see if they actually come back. This is, on this item six, we have A through G, which is really a fiscal year calculation, it's a separate calculation, most of our stuff is done by calendar year, but we have to do it for the, for finance. These are the final numbers on the permits, that breaks down what we had These are the final numbers on the permits, so that breaks down what we had shown you in the front. And then I added the Growth Management Ordinance numbers, so if those ones are for the 2023, so they should match your sheets that we provide, that staff provides to you. ICC certifications, and all of our staff are really doing a great job. We have three code officers now that are certified, which is not easy to get, but they did, they powered through and they got it done. They are now certified code officers, and we've got a number of inspectors that are still moving through that process of getting more and more building inspection certifications. And then we have Jordan, who is going above and beyond and has received her Permit Technician Certificate and also a building inspector. So she actually can go out and do building inspections too. Large scanning project, we've talked about. We're excited about that getting done. Red Hawk property acquired, and Jeremy is trying to get that accomplished as quickly as possible. Another one Jeremy's been working on, and I appreciate his leadership on this, and Scott Morgan as well, is that multimodal trail, which I think you referred to at the, we needed some funding. You guys supported that funding for the TAP grant at Nevada Department of Transportation's. And so we do have that moving forward, and we have applied for those applications, and hopefully we'll hear. I know it is a priority for NDOT to get that connection done. They've heard from the public as well. And then we should be issuing Mueller Parkway SIP any day now. We're waiting on fire actually at the moment. Here's our positions, our org chart for 2024, and here is the Building Inspector Senior, which was recently added in our job family. And we won't need to have a building inspector, an extra one, so we won't need five inspectors. We really just need four for right now, but we still will need the ability to contract with somebody to cover the high-demand days. These guys are still running pretty ragged on trying to get all of the inspections done. And so the 32 staff does not include the inspector senior position, because we don't have that one filled. It was just this last couple of months that it was added. And then the revenues, these are the estimated revenues. We worked through this diligently with Kathy's team and came up, I did add a summary there because I wanted to know how much it was, the $4,765,000. And when you do the math on what the expenses are later on in the slides, or actually later in your book, I think it's pages 136 through, I can't remember how many pages it was, but they have, we are about 300,000 short of making as much revenue as we are in expenses. So we do have a fee schedule proposed to bring forward to the board soon. It's out to the public right now to get some comments, or it'll soon be out to the public.
What I would observe in that is the 351150 VHR fines and penalties. It appears that those are coming down significantly as people are paying attention and living by the code, which is good news, right?
Right. That was the object, right? That was the objective of that. Thank you, Code Enforcement. So the budget, I don't know if there's any questions on this. The training and travel on all of these, I believe, went up a little. We want to support staff in getting trained. We do have, when you look at the building piece or the building budget, we do have a lot of training for the new codes that are coming in, the 2024 codes. We need to train our staff to get up to snuff on what actually changed between 2018 and 2024. So that is going to be critical, and I know there's a lot of changes due to batteries in garages and things like that. So we really want to make sure that they capture that. Professional Services in, or no, I want to talk about the Health Division and Environmental Health. This is a contract we have with Carson City that does actually do all of our inspections for health, for our restaurants, and make sure that they, so when you walk into the restaurant and see the grade, they're the ones that issue that grade. And so they're doing those inspections, they inspect pools. We do have a contract with them. It's $337,000, but what we've seen is they lost a lot of staff, and they don't have as much staff to go out and enforce as in Carson City and Douglas as they used to, and the fees are dropping. So we did take advantage of that in this budget number here. So that's why it's at 262, which is just over what we actually spent in 2023. And I think this year, we're going to be actually way short, and they'll owe us money. So that'll be good. They do collect health fees as restaurants do apply. They pay a fee to the Health Department. Health Department tracks that and then reimburses the county if it goes over their expenses to manage that permit. Printing and binding was 64%. It was something that we had in the Building Department. We were needing to order new stickers for electrical boxes, so that has the sticker, and we're coming up with a new code. We may adopt a new code, so I need to get that in the budget to cover those costs. It's a foil sticker that goes on the meter. So that is increased for that particular item. And then, of course, the training and education piece for code, getting our inspectors up to current education standards on the inspection portion of that new code for 2024. And then this one, 15%. Same thing in planning, planning and travel. They wanted to go to the National Conference. I think we increased, I just said it, increased by one or two people on this one. I can't remember. I think it might be two actually for this one. Increased so they can go to the National Conference this year. I think it's in the West Coast this time. So we thought that that would be good to send all the planners to that National Conference and start learning and getting their names out there and meeting new planners in the area so they can actually do better planning, really, for Douglas County. So the professional services, this is, this covers a contract. We do have a contract with Dow, and they are doing plan review for Building Department on the planning side. So it's really setbacks and making sure that they're aligned with the code, and they're doing a great job. The lady at Dow is just doing remarkable, actually. And so that is in here for a contract, to continue that contract for us, and that is helping us so we don't have to have another planner in our building that's already full. And then also, we had 27,000 in the budget here, and that'll come up again in the future slide for the Tahoe-Douglas Area Plan, but I think we can move it to ARPA funding, but we'll talk about that. And then Training and Education in Engineering, they all have to have CEUs. We do have two licensed engineers, plus myself, that need to have the continuing education in order to keep their licenses current, and this is covering the training and education needed for continuing education credits. And then the printing and binding went up because we have to order some new manuals for this department as well that are being updated. I believe they're NDOT manuals. And then office supplies usually got covered under admin. This one is just increased from, I don't know, was that $22 to $385? But office supplies for them is just like paper and copier stuff, so minor amounts. This is the new fund, so we don't have any history on vacation home rentals yet. This will be the first one. And all of these fees came out of 1017 or 517, which is the code enforcement. So code enforcement and VHR were combined into one budget last year, and so you'll see everything's negative on that side because we moved those fees into 515.
I think that was a wise, just an observation, I think that was a good move. Okay? So we can have better transparency on what the two programs are costing us.
So supplemental requests, we'll get to this. We did have the Development Coordinator Senior. That one we would like to keep. If we do replace the Building Inspector, it would be about a $9,800 increase to the budget rather than $100,000 and some change. The lease rental space in admin, Scott Morgan and I have been looking around for a new building to house community development, maybe another department or two. We are bursting at the seams, and we're timesharing out our engineering office. So we have one staff member that comes in on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday and Thursday, Monday, Wednesday and Friday, and then Tuesday and Thursday. So we're sharing offices in our department, and everybody else, you know, it's important that we're there for the public when they come in for a question, and it'll be better just to be in a different building and more secure for the county manager, HR, and Finance. Professional Service, the 2020 Master Plan, I know we just talked about this. We were thinking $150,000 for some assistance in that. I think we can do most of it in-house, but we are going to need some help, and I don't think that it's appropriate for the county staff to start dictating to the public on what kind of uses. We want our future land use plan to mimic, and we need to wait for the TDR study to actually get done in order to see what the recommendations are, and then we can move forward on seeing what we're going to do with this receiving area. The Tahoe-Douglas Area Plan.
Tom, before you move on, I'm so sorry. Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. I just wanted to interject. I also think it's important for us, Tom and I have, excuse me, Mr. Delair and I have had multiple conversations regarding the need to update the transportation plan also to feed into the data utilized by the County Commission when you're making land use and zoning decisions related to the master plan update. It's going to be really important to have that transportation related to that. So I think the TDR program really understanding and getting a good grasp on how we could potentially improve and build upon that program, consistent with the direction we received from this board as part of the strategic plan. And also, the transportation plan are going to take some time. And so ultimately, Tom and I have talked about how we could phase this appropriately so the board has the information you guys need going into the master plan update. Tom, also, can we just touch base on one thing? I was pulling up the statutory requirements on master plan updates, and I can't find where it says we're required to update a master plan every five years. And I thought you and I had discussed when we started the master plan update in 2019 that there's such a thing as a, for lack of a better word, a minor update, like an every-five-year update, and then there's like a major overhaul update that happens at some other frequency. And I know we've been having conversations with the Planning Commission about what kind of a level of an update is a five-year. How much are we going to dig into the master plan? Commissioner Hale's alluded to, are we really going to be looking at each of these community areas and digging in at that level, or is that based on the desire of the board? Again, excuse my ignorance on this topic.
Yeah, thanks, Jen. I think that what I've heard from the board is they want to update the community plan, similar to what Ms. Waller has stated on the record multiple times in the valley. We didn't do that when we updated it in 2020. We left the community plans alone. We updated the text. So we have the opportunity this time focus on the community plan and update the text as needed. The front section has to be updated because of the data is from 2019, not 2024. So we will have to do that eventually. But this fund here was to help staff with updating community plans is what we were planning on trying to accomplish with that money. And then we did talk, thank you for talking about the transportation plan. The model is almost complete. I understand we'll have that out next month possibly. And then once we do that, we do have a next step, which is analyzing some intersections, which has never been done in the transportation plan, and that was funded through the Adjusted Opening Fund Balance program. We do have $100,000 for that, and we're going to contract that out. Jeremy's working also on that project also. And then we've talked about the Douglas Area Plan. This is an ARPA-funded request in your packet. I can't find all the pages, but under ARPA funding. And if we can increase that by 27,000, I'd be able to decrease my budget by 27,000 in this year's budget. And then I can get that contract signed this year. So it would be very helpful, and we'll talk to staff on that with the final budget coming up. There you go. Was it fast enough? It's too slow still. Way too much detail. Tarkanian's, yeah.
I'm going to crack a joke, but I told Mark not to talk, so I shouldn't.
Okay. All right. All right. I tried, I'm sorry.
We both made an observation that our jokes go over flat here, but we don't even share them at home because they just don't get over at all.
All right.
Mr. Delair, thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
I think it cleared some of the questions that were in some of our minds as to how many commissions we have to answer to and the lake, the valley, and all of the other requirements that we have. And you did a very good job of explaining that. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. I didn't cover, just for the record, I didn't cover the software. You guys have the detail. All the programs, there's a lot, and we're making it more efficient for the public. That's what that does. So anyway, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the board? I'm sorry, I just turned off.
Mr. Gaines, thanks.
Yeah. So Doug, show them the packet. Yep, there's the answer to all the questions that we had from him. So right there. Yep.
I think we need to buy you a scale.
No comment.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, I believe that concludes all of our presentations for the day. So I sense this was for possible action. I will open the floor for public comment.
Good afternoon. I'll make this brief. I know it's a supplemental request. I think updating the website improves all departments, all everything, and I know we got to scrub, scrub, scrub. I've said that in my public comments, and I'm hoping that we can really figure out how to get the website updated. It's a tool, not only internally but externally, and as the county manager's office states, you know, we've embraced a brand, and part of that is to have consistent information, and I'm proud to be a Douglas County citizen.
Thank you. Any further public comment on item number one? Saying none, I will close public comment on item number one and go to closing public comment. Is there any closing public comment? Saying none. We are adjourned.